Good evening, I'm Rich Mucci. Welcome to the Monday, September 12 Winchester Select Board Meeting. With me are my colleagues John Fallon, Michael Betancourt, Mariana Gulabov, and Anthea Brady. We are going to start right away with our land acknowledgement, which we do in the first meeting of every month, and then we'll jump right into our agenda.
We acknowledge that we're meeting on the ancestral homeland of the Massachusetts people who lived here for thousands of years before European colonists began arriving about 1630. In the 1600s, the Massachusetts were led by the Sanzwa, Mizetacwa, Kalasasas, Sajambe colonists, who led their people through epidemics, wars, and displacement. We acknowledge that Winchester exists in a region where lands were taken under unjust and violent circumstances, causing a forced relocation that continues to have harmful effects on native communities. Despite the town government of Winchester, we recognize our responsibility now to be the stewards of this land, and we acknowledge that Massachusetts, Monclova, and other indigenous people from across the country currently live in Winchester throughout the state and contribute to our community in various ways.
Thank you, Anthea. I'd like to welcome our friends from Paradigm. Here, we're going to start with the Town Manager Search. Bernie, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for the post-statement. I think everyone has had a chance to review that. We could certainly have a discussion about it tonight, but I'll open remarks if you want to give anything.
Sure, well, thank you, and thank you for having us here tonight. And I guess this might be the first opportunity I've had to thank you for choosing us to help you with this important search. I know that over the last few weeks, a number of you have spoken to Rayce and Tilly. I also have with us John Petron, who has sat in on some of the preliminary meetings. And this is the team of people that will be working on this search process. In terms of the actual steps in the process, what we've gone through is really that first step of getting to know more about the town, speaking to you as the executive board of the community, talking with some of the department heads, pulling together the information. So we have a good sense of what you're looking for in the next town manager, and hopefully it gives you an opportunity to kind of step back and think, okay, this is what we need, this is what we want, the issues that we're facing that we think are important. We use it to develop the position statement, which then becomes a recruiting tool for us. We use that to distribute out to candidates that are interested in the position or may be interested in the position. We do certainly advertising to get the word out that the position is open, but more importantly, I think we go out and we do active recruitment. All of us have been in municipal government for almost 40 years, or roughly 40 years each. So you've got over a century of experience right at this table. We just don't look that old. And, but, so for tonight's purposes, obviously, we want to talk a little bit about the process that we're using, you know, and we want to make sure that what we got on paper is what you're looking for from your next town managers. Is there anything we missed, anything we got wrong? If there is, it's Ray's fault. And, but, that's it. And again, to take some questions and again, talk about sort of the next steps following this.
Great, thank you. So why don't we start with the position statement first, and, you know, just chime in if you have any comments after reviewing it. You know, my understanding of the position statement, correct or wrong, it's kind of like a marketing statement for the town, right? We want to sell the town to prospective candidates. And it seems like, you know, we're casting, you know, looking at the charter and the criteria that we're looking for, and we have that disclaimer at the end there about experience, that we're trying to cast a large net. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
We want, the goal is to encourage people to apply, not detract people from applying, is that?
We want to attract people to apply, but we want to attract the right people to apply. So, you know, what we try to sort of place in that profile is the types of issues, the types of skill sets that are needed, or that you have, so that, you know, if someone is looking for, you know, some type of work on some other, I'll just, so that I don't have to stretch my brain too much right now, some other issue that might be more, you know, similar to what they might find in a very rural community, or a more urban community, that they'll read this and say, that's not, that's not me. You know, I was speaking with someone just on the way up here, that was, was looking for something that was looking for more of a rural-type community. And, you know, after reading this, we would anticipate that that individual wouldn't be interested in this, in the town of Winchester. So hopefully, we've helped narrow that out. But it is designed to attract candidates. We place it on our website, and we get about 4,000 hits a month, people going in, looking for jobs from around the country, particularly here, obviously, in Massachusetts, and this will pop up. Once you give us the go-ahead, this will pop up, they'll start seeing it. We'll start sending out a position announcement to candidates that we're familiar with, that are in our database, and that will drive them, again, to our website, to this. It can also reside on your own town website, but it's designed to explain the community, explain the position, and market the position. Yes.
Bernie, do candidates follow the certain buckets? Meaning that, so you've got the rural, urban, and suburban. Maybe you've got folks who want a challenge, maybe you have people who are later in their career, people who want to relocate, and so we look at the cost of living here, so can people really relocate here? So when you look at this, what does that universe look like? And is it six components or nine buckets, and so forth?
Well, again, I don't think it necessarily would attract the people that are looking for urban issues or rural issues. So we've got that down. So those two buckets are out. But there are some that may be looking for, you know, bits and pieces of each, you know, and there may be, you know, it's hard to say, there are certainly, I don't know if you can ever really knock out a bucket with this that is the person who's looking for a challenge versus the person who's new and, or, excuse me, more seasoned than just sort of looking to coast their way to the end.
Right.
They might bring experience, and if they're here for six or eight years with that, that might be exactly what you have in mind. But you might be looking for someone who's, after looking, see, that's one of those, I think that's one of those cases where you would look at candidate A and candidate B, might be, one might be really less experienced, but hungry, and has shown tremendous potential for growth, and the other would be more seasoned, not quite as hungry, but would bring that stability that you might be looking for. And you, that will be ultimately up to you to weigh over. Unless you're looking for, if you really want to stay away from one, tell us, and we'll sort of keep that away from you. But in terms of relocating, there are a few people that are looking, I was talking to someone tonight, who's looking to, who's from Massachusetts that's looking, is that in Wisconsin right now, looking to relocate back. There are others that are looking from out of state to come here for the first time. So that, that can work. Right next door, you had, down the street, you had Redding, the former town manager of Redding a few years back, who spent 30 years here coming out of New Jersey, was very successful. And you have other stories we can tell you of candidates that came from out of state that couldn't understand town meeting form of government, right?
But don't have the capacity to understand the way it's handled, you know, with, and that's what we try to dig into, is the capacity of a candidate to understand that this is not a hierarchy, you know, starting at the top, making decisions, this is where you're going to bring people together and form coalitions in decision-making.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments about the position statement?
Did we capture the town adequately?
Yeah, I think so, and I think, you know, Rich's comments help me understand, too, that we're casting a wide net here, and it's meant to be a little bit broader than what the charter necessarily prescribes, and I think that's important for us, and so appreciate that.
It is, it is a challenging market, I will tell you that. You probably have already heard this, that, you know, and I always give this, this number, that roughly two-thirds of the communities in Massachusetts have turned over managers in the last five years, five, six years. And so, and there aren't necessarily, most of it's been retirements, but, you know, there's a natural churn that happens with it as well. Someone retires, someone from another community might move into that slot, and now you've got another opening somewhere. But, you know, there aren't necessarily, many people are still in their first contract, maybe their second contract, and they're not yet ready to move. But what we're seeing is actually, a number of searches we've done recently, we're starting to see, we're starting to see a little break in that, that we are starting to see more activity, more people, particularly in this area.
A lot of it is, where are you located? I think you're in a good location, because there's, a lot of people aren't moving these days within the state because of the markets, you know, there's other pieces. But I think you're in an area where a lot of folks, you know, who are in the business, can easily commute to, you know, and make that transition. So I think you're, you're in good shape that way. You're not out of the way, and you're hitting, you know, an area where there's candidates who live, live within that region. We see a lot of that. Certain parts of the state we have difficulty in, because there's just, the experience isn't there. You know, we go western Massachusetts, it's always difficult, okay, what's the pool looking like? And trying to draw from a pool is more difficult. Here, you've got, you know, more opportunity to draw from that pool. So we'll be working that.
Great. Other comments on the statement?
I had a, I had just a question, maybe, I think, you know, this is, it's very comprehensive in what it's trying to capture and what it's trying to appeal to. This feels kind of like a personal comment, but, in the, like, the Winchester history piece kind of drops off about, so, 20 years ago, and I wondered if there was, you know, any additional context that could, could be brought in at that point, or?
Or adding to the history?
It just seems like it goes up to 1900, which gives us, like, really historical history of Winchester, but maybe not so much of, like?
But those are hyperlinks in here that take you, Ray?
Yeah, the last one especially.
So the hyperlinks will take you into a more detailed review. So that's why we do the hyperlinks in here.
It's tough to try to balance too much, not enough, so you want to attract and kind of get them curious, so we have a link to the historical side, and then a link to the online history.
Right. And it's, you know, some communities, we, we try to give people a little bit of context of, if they're not familiar with the community, it's like, you know, sort of understanding what Winchester's sort of about, just gives a little bit of flavor, a little bit of color to the, to the town. But it's, it does drop off. I, it's like, nothing happened since 1900.
So other than traditional candidates moving from one town to another, have you had, seen non, some non-traditional candidates be successful, and where are they coming from, and so forth, like, in your experience?
Successful as?
I think that, I think that, I think we've had some candidates that have come from non-traditional backgrounds, but the successful ones have had some experience with municipal government in some way. You know, there's a community that, actually, we didn't do the search, we were replacing the town administrator in this community, who had been a, working for one of the big accounting firms. And that was what his employment was prior to moving into the town administrative position. But he'd served on his, his town's finance committee for 20 years. So he knew municipal finance, he knew municipal issues, he knew municipal organizations. We've had another, we've had people from the military that have been, served as department heads in communities and cities, in towns, that have been successful in moving from. But the question is, is it the military experience that's made them successful, or is it the municipal experience? Probably a little of both. We've had other military people that have come through, that know municipal experience, great leadership skills, but it doesn't necessarily translate, particularly based on what the community's needs are. That's generally, you know, I'm trying to think of some other, some of the other candidates that we've had. Certainly, we've had, you know, we've had some mayors move into these spots, you know, certainly, there is some example, and you, I don't have to tell you that, you know that, both, on both counts. You know, but that, I think having the municipal experience is crucial, in terms of success.
And that's what I was talking about earlier, is at least having an understanding, you know, because some of these places, you know, especially if they're not paying as well the smaller communities, what we're looking for, do they have the capacity to transfer into this setting? And transferring into the setting is understanding, what's the union environment really like? You know, it's, again, it's not a command structure as strong as it is in other industry, you know, or in the military. It is one where you need to bring, you know, folks, you know, to the table and get understandings and be able to work the issues. So if we feel they have that type of background, you know, and those are two questions we kind of ask, you know, when we're vetting candidates upfront, you know, if they don't have the experience, you know, we'll start talking about, what's town meeting like, and what's the union environment like? And those are the two areas we kind of, you know, need to vet a little more with these type of candidates.
Great, thank you.
As well as what we have to vet for any out-of-state candidates?
Yeah.
Same thing. Many states don't have public sector unions, so that, that's a whole new concept for managers coming from out of state.
And you've seen that happen with police chiefs, fire chiefs, who come from out of state, they come in here, and they don't realize that the environment is a little bit different.
So, yeah, I don't have any overarching things, I think in general looks really good. I have a few small things that I think can be fixed before putting it out. So on the operating reserves, we just got the new controllers report for our meeting tonight. Instead of 12.46%, we're above 16% operating reserves, so I think that makes the finances look better. That's in page four, halfway down the page. On the upcoming projects and challenges, on this first bullet, say, plan override in spring 2023, I would say plan dead exclusion, you're using dead exclusion on the second bullet, so just to be consistent. And then on education and experience, and this is maybe something that we need to discuss rather than fix, but I think that a degree in public administration or business administration being required, I don't agree with that, I think it should be preferred, because there can be other degrees that somebody can come into, you know, somebody could be a civil engineer and, you know, and come into public government through that route, so.
Is that chat?
But that would be for all of us to decide, not, I don't think that that's something that's chat.
No, I think I got it off of something I received from HR.
Okay, but we can, so bachelor's degree?
I mean, I think that probably goes, your last point, Mariana, it probably goes to our, our previous job postings, where we?
I think, yeah, something I got from HR.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's a question for all of us, I guess.
Can it be modified? So that is still saying that the bachelor's degree is required with public administration or business administration preferred? Some, some way to do that more eloquently than I just stated?
So a bachelor's degree is required, and then a, and then those others are preferred, and then a master's degree is preferred as well? Something like that?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I don't want any else, thanks.
I mean, it could be, you know, relevant higher degree or something like that, I mean, we can decide what's relevant for the position at that point, you know, so, you know, if somebody's got a, you know, doctorate in finance, you know, we're, we're going to want to talk to them, you know, so.
And that's why we put the caveat, too, that any equivalent combination is up to the select board, so.
Right.
Depending on what the candidate that you prefer has, it gives you that kind of option, or that kind of out.
Yeah, I just don't want somebody to read the first part and say, well, I don't have a public admin, so I'm not going to apply, right?
Right, I agree.
That's fine.
I have a degree in that, but that's a hard program to come by undergrad, so appreciate that.
All right, so if everyone's okay with the position statement, we can move forward with getting that posted and getting it marketed out, so everyone go with that? And I don't know, Bernie, do you want to just talk about the next steps?
Sure.
So if we, once we approve that position statement, and we can take a formal vote if people want to do that, you know, what would be the next steps?
Well, with that done, probably tomorrow or the day after, the position will be advertised. We generally keep these positions open for four weeks, and at that point, when the resumes come in to us, the next sort of decision point is how you want those resumes to be reviewed and screened.
Just send them to me.
Okay. Perfect.
As long as it's not three of you.
So, yeah, the?
John's an overachiever, in case you haven't heard about this.
You know, I guess there are three different options, or two different options with one modification to one. We're happy to review them and narrow it down to a group of finalists that we bring in to you, we've done that in communities. The other option is having you appoint some type of screening committee of some form that would, and then the decision, the question on that would be, do you want the screening committee, and we can talk about the, what the screening committee looks like in a moment, but the question would be whether the screening committee would take all of the resumes and determine who to interview, or whether some communities have asked us to take the screen, the pool, narrow it down to, let's say, seven or eight, that would then be presented to the screening committee with a recommendation that they interview, to choose the three or four finalists. And the screening committee composition could be, you know, a variety of different forms and formats.
So I think that second part will be a conversation for a different night. You know, my understanding is we don't need to have that decision made for a couple of weeks.
We don't need, we don't need them to be able to, they, they will not have anything to do until the resumes are in hand, so we're basically talking five weeks, let's say, four or five weeks out.
So your issue, though, is making a decision, and then if you're recruiting people for the screening committee, then pulling that together so that can be done, you know, in that four- to five-week period. Because if it's not, then it's, you know, then it slows the process down in the review, you know, of the applications at that point. So we do run into that issue, you know, more often than not, you know, with, with towns and trying, we're waiting on screening committees, you know, to move the process forward. So just as a point.
And I wouldn't say more often than not, but occasionally, we have run into that, and it slows it down, so that, yeah. The other, the other, the other point you should know is, as far as the screening committee goes, if you decide to go that route, is that if we're talking, let's say, five weeks out that we need them to meet, five or six weeks out, they would meet probably to review the resumes initially, just to talk about the candidates, and then probably one, one full day or two half-days to do the interviews and make the choice. So it's not a, it's an important task, if you choose to go that route, but it's not a heavy, we'll say, you know, very heavy lift.
So just so I understand, the scenarios you're presenting, I know we can do this different ways, the one you just mentioned, just caught my attention, are the, is the screening committee doing the interviews, or are they just screening resumes for us to interview?
They would, if they were screening, they could, they could just look at the resumes and choose candidates to send on to you, for you to do the interview. Or they could do preliminary interviews, so if, let's say, they had eight that they looked at, that they chose eight, or they, we gave them eight, that they would then narrow that eight down to four, three or four, and send those three or four to you. I think you should focus on having three or four finalists. Anything larger than that, you start to spook the candidates, it's too large a field that their chances are too small to be selected. And because many of these candidates will be, you know, are currently employed, they may not want their names out there that they're looking. And once it comes to you, it has to be done publicly. So they would, depending upon the charge that you give them, and we're happy to make some modifications, if you want them just to narrow that down to the three or four, or if you want them to, without interviews, or if you want them to do some interviews, we'll leave that up to you, how you want that to work.
So like I said, I think that's a conversation for a different meeting. I think tonight's purpose of this conversation was to have Bernie and his team come for us, get this position statement, you know, advertise, get it out there, and then, you know, at our next meeting, probably talk about, you know, that process moving forward. And that gives us certainly plenty of time to, to put that, that piece in.
Screening committee, five to seven, we recommend, too. So I don't think that's been stated, so five to seven, you know, we prefer five, seven, you know, we can work with.
Bigger than that, it gets tough to manage and meet.
Getting people to, and, and when you do, you know, approach somebody, make sure they're available in the timeframe we're looking at, and then on, on vacation for two weeks.
Can you tell us the dates that you're going to need the screening committee? That way, we can reach to people, we reach out to people with the dates.
Sure, let me get that to you.
Yeah, if you can email us.
So I assume, just based on the timeline, it'll probably be the, the second half of October.
The latter part of October.
Is there a sort of a recommended composition of a screening committee, who they might be?
Every town is, goes at this a little bit differently. You know, it's, again, it's good to have people that understand the town government and the town's needs, so, you know, someone that, you know, let me put, let me put it out this way, there occasionally, you want to?
Well, what we normally see, you know, is from certain groups, so maybe one member of the select board might be on the screening committee, finance committee, school committee, maybe planning board, depending on the needs of the community, you know, looking at a department head, you know, potentially, and then maybe one at-large or two at-large citizens who have no connection, you know, to have that outside view. Those are all the types of folks that we've been seeing.
Maybe someone from the business community.
Yes.
It's one of the at-large people.
It's done in a number of different ways.
There's no ideal composition of the committee.
I mean, I worked for a town where the five select board members each got to pick a person, so that was the five-member screening committee. So that nobody kind of said, oh, you have two, I have one, I have none, that kind of stuff. It all depends what you want to do.
There's no, we've seen every kind work. The only, the only, you know, caveat I would put is that the screening committee has to understand that their role is to screen, not to select. So their job is not to, you know, take this position statement and say, well, the, the select board got it wrong, and we've seen that happen.
And to be discreet, and the candidates who applied.
Right. But you don't want someone to say, and you don't want them to, the committee to overrule what the select board wants.
Any other questions?
One quick question here. It seems that what happens in a lot of communities is, this process gets put in place, and as you mentioned, there's some finalists, and they get a little scared, their community, you know, hears through the grapevine, you know, gives them a raise, and then they back out, and then you're left with one or zero, right? And that just seems the way that things go, which is extremely frustrating, but it seems like it happens everywhere. I mean, is there any way that we can get ahead of that with the process, you know, before things are public, or give some, some certainty that people will be protected, or, you know?
There isn't a lot. We've, we've certainly, we, I have one community where there was just a horror show of that. You know, we had five people, that, that was a community that the board wanted us to pick people, so we picked five people, and then before I knew it, it was down to one.
Right.
And, so, you know, but of late, we haven't been seeing that quite as much, but it's, you know, we try, we do try to identify candidates that are in it for real, and those that are sort of just sort of playing it out.
Yeah.
So, and we try to discourage, we work, again, in working with the screening committee or working with the board, we will try to identify candidates before we get to that point. And it, there's no guarantee on that, but it's, it's something, it's something we look for.
So do you ask them, if your employer counters, will you stay?
Not quite that directly, but because they could obviously say no.
Right, but then, but then, you're like, then, then they're on the do-not-hire list because they were untruthful.
Right, right. But we do, we do get a sense from them based upon where they are with their, their community, why they're looking, and we know their, generally, we know their histories. We know, and I mean, that's one of, again, one of the benefits that I think we bring, is we know pretty much every- is we know pretty much every candidate out there. It's always fascinating to look at the, the list when they apply, and it's like, yep, know them, know them, know them. It's like, suddenly there's one surprise, but that surprise candidate is someone that we know from somebody else, chances are.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, very good. So, do you want us to vote on that position statement? Should we take a vote on that, or?
Sure, if you wish.
So I move we adopt the position statement as presented with the recommendations suggested for posting the town manager position.
And subject to those revisions?
Yeah, subject to revisions, by the way.
Yep. So I move we accept the position statement for the town manager position, subject to the revisions suggested tonight, for posting the position. I feel like I just went in circles.
You got it, second.
All those in favor? You want to post?
Nope.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us.
Thank you.
In touch.
Have a good night.
You too. Do you want to grab that? At this point, I'd invite Stacy up. I think I see Stacy. Stacy, if you want to come on up, give your report. How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good. Thanks for your report.
Been a while, I think it's been, I don't know, since Springtown meeting, I think I've seen you. I've been buried doing payroll, which she started today, our new payroll manager, so we're very excited. But I'll get into the, the nitty-gritty. You all received both reports, the June and July. I won't talk much about July, it's not really, it's the first month of the fiscal year, nothing too exciting. Well, it's all exciting, but you know what I mean. The good news is, is that we finished the year with an operating reserve of over 16%, which I mentioned a few of the contributing factors, which we knew of, the chapter 40B payments, over a million dollars from the River Street and the Cambridge Street developments. We also have a little bit of good news with some of the, the, the electrical and the plumbing permits. We're getting some big checks in for those, for those permits as well. So that'll bump up our revenue a little bit in '23. Let's see. In addition to that, there was several different pieces of miscellaneous revenue that came in that I outlined, ever sourced money that we had up fronted project costs, knowing that they would reimburse us based on MOAs and MOUs, or whatever you want to call them. But the state also participated, or they gave money to communities who participated in the reimbursement program for the sick leave time, if people were out due to COVID reasons. And we took advantage of whatever we could with that, and that was $125,000, which was money we didn't really know was even out there until, surprise, we get some money, and we'll take it. We did budget for our $275,000 developer payment back in the fall, which is why you'll see some of the money was budgeted. We have transfers from the FEMA Public Assistance Grant, that was, I guess, a revolving door of costs. We weren't sure what we were going to get reimbursed for, so we just left them in the general fund in '20 and '21. And once they gave us the money, we just moved it in. So it looks like an unbudgeted transfer, but it's all good. We also have SAFER Federal Grant, that ended this year, but it pays for some fringe benefits and health insurance costs and retiree costs. MAPC had a state grant for the Sustainability, Sustainability Director Program. And Circuit Breaker, we had a couple open POs, and it ended up not ever coming to fruition, so that closes to the general fund. I have a feeling the school might want to get some of that, maybe, in the future. But as far as the general fund, good news, we had more turnbacks related to just, I think, police, fire, library turnover, turnover, and vacant positions. There really wasn't anything specific other than that, that issue. And I mentioned in the health insurance budget, we had 274,000 left over, which we could possibly propose an article to move it to the Health Stabilization Trust Fund, if that's an idea that the board supports. So I don't know, do you guys have any questions about FY '22?
Questions for Stacy? I mean, it was very thorough, as always.
Let me off the hook, all right.
No, I mean, you know, all good news.
Yep, yep, good.
You know, it sounds promising, although it sounds like a lot of those turnbacks are something we should, probably shouldn't be counting on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I always say, I never like to count on too much of that, and recurring, with '20 with COVID, '21 with COVID, I think '22 is the last year we were really super conservative. I think we're going to change our path with '23, or we have anyway. So I, I think the tighter we budget, and the more we kind of stretch our, our revenues, we're not going to see a lot of that, but we just hope for the best, right? And we, we might have to do some rebalancing with the Recreation Fund, I mentioned that in the report, just with their revenue. The, the DOR is pretty strict with how you budget those kind of program fees, but I think with their retained earnings at such a high amount, they'll be able to balance it with retained earnings, and then anything over that can just replenish the retained earnings at the end of the year in FY '23. We have a meeting with him, Nick, this week, I think, right?
One second, yeah.
Yep. So yeah, just, as always, if you have any questions, or if you want any additional information, you can always email me. There's some ARPA numbers in here, I can get you an up-to-date, fresh ARPA report of your next meeting, just through, through the date of your, our meeting.
So, I mean, one thing I, I would say, this is not for you, Stacy, but I think, you know, moving forward, you know, one challenge that we need to figure out is, we need to understand whether we're budgeting conservatively, or if we're budgeting tightly, right?
Yep.
And, because when we make three-year predictions based, without understanding that, we see what we've seen in the last several town meetings, that we have numbers that don't come to fruition. I mean, here, we were looking at the reserves presented at town meeting, the reserves were going to drop to 12.4% from 14.3%. That's what FINCOM showed, that they were going to be right now, 12.4%, and they're 16 and a quarter percent. I mean, that's a huge difference, right? And so if we're budgeting at town meeting, if we're cutting things at town meeting based on those numbers, we really need to understand, is the budget tight? Is the budget conservative, right? Because that really changes the decisions that town meeting makes for whether to cut budgets, or whether to allocate money from free cash to things, so.
Yeah, that, that is true.
I, I think just having that level of understanding of where are we in the budget? Are we, is that something that we expect reversions if a couple people don't get hired, right? Is that, or is that something that is really tight, and we expect, you know, those kinds of things are?
Yeah, I mean, I wish I knew more during the year. This year was the only year we ever even had any sort of revenue excess that we were aware of. So it was just an anomaly, really, and you never know. You talk to the police and fire, and they're like, no, I don't want to say that I'm going to have any turnbacks, because we don't know what's going to happen with injuries and overtime. It's a tough, it's a tough call, and as you know, there's so many components of what goes into that reserve calc, and any estimated operating reserves in the future. You change one thing, it affects everything. So it is a difficult thing to manage, but in our case, luckily, we've, we're, we're in the positive, and it's a good result. It could, hopefully, we don't want to, we don't want to plan for a bad result, but, you know, that we'll do, we'll be jumping into budget planning shortly, sooner than later.
I think too, you know, we were in kind of this, not that we're, you know, beyond COVID at this point, but we were at that point where we're still on shaky ground, and we were putting that budget together. So I think that, you know, being a little bit more conservative, especially, you know, with our public safety departments, right? I mean, there, you know, was a time when we were, you know, getting some federal funding to, to support some overtime and things like that, and there were some reversions, but it's at a, a point where we don't know what we're going to need going into that budget year. This year, probably, maybe we feel a little bit better about that. I, I don't know, so.
I feel like the COVID unknowns have at least kind of subsided a bit, especially with the ARPA money and other resources that we've had. Even the rec department's gotten a lot of money. I mean, it's not a lot when you look at our $140 million budget, but in their, in their case, it's a lot, and we've been getting a lot of help, which has been great, and we've been taking advantage of. Hopefully, there'll be more.
Great.
I just wanted to mention quickly that the Comptroller's Office, as of today, is fully staffed. They've hired a new payroll manager, so it's been a tough few months since Ellen Howard left for their department, so we're very happy to have them back, fully staffed.
What are you going to do with all this free time?
I don't know, I just, I might take a vacation. I know I tried taking a vacation, it didn't really work, but, we'll see.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Stacy, for coming in. Have a great day. All right, I know we've got several guests here for interviews, for appointments to certain committees, so why don't we jump right to that? And I'd ask, we're going to start with the Climate Action Advisory Committee, there are four positions, four incumbents, and then we have one student position to interview. So, any issues or discussion concerning reappointing Richard Eno, Ruth Trimarki, Prasadi Kalabi, and Wei Chen?
No.
Hearing none, can I just have a motion?
I move we reappoint Richard Eno and Ruth Trimarki to the Climate Action Advisory Committee for the term to expire August 31st, 2024, and Prasadi Kalabi and Wei Chen for the term to expire August 31st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. All right. Next, we're going to interview, we had one application for our student climate action committee position, and Taipas? Tapas? Come on up.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Thanks for joining us. Did you bring your Rubik's Cube?
No, I did not.
First question I had to ask.
I should have.
You might want to explain that, because everyone's probably wondering why I asked you if you have your Rubik's Cube.
Oh, yeah. Last, last year, when I applied, Mr. Moochi was asking me how I was able to solve a Rubik's Cube blindfolded under two minutes. And he asked me to bring the cube next time, maybe, but, I'm so sorry, I forgot.
It's all right.
Next time.
We know where to find you.
Yeah, all right, so, yeah, you guys remember that I applied last year?
Sure.
I was not accepted, however, I did take your advice, and I was working with the committee independently. I've been an active participant in the committee's, committee's meetings and efforts, and over the last year, I've focused on issues of sustainability, particularly the drive towards zero waste. And I've been working with Dr. Kalabi of the Climate Action Advisory Committee, and Nick, sorry, Nick Parley from the DPW, and he's also the director of a transfer station, to divert food waste away from landfills. And so some of the things we did is, we decided to install signage at strategic locations in the transfer station to encourage and track food waste diversion. And I created some designs for the signage, and got the buy-in from Mr. Parley. I also designed a mascot to be the face of our town's trash reduction efforts, and that was also well-received by the committee. And I've also been working with the Climate Action Advisory Committee and the DPW to develop a program involving the schools to educate Winchester residents on the benefits of reducing waste. And I'd love to implement this, this year, as a member of the committee. And I'm actually going to be attending college next fall, and I want to get a lot done for then, so I'm excited to collaborate with the rest of the committee and town to pursue our goals that are outlined in the Climate Action Plan, and make some substantial progress this year.
Well, that's great. You have been very involved, I'm not sure how you sleep. Where do you find time for that? Your resume is extremely professional, extremely, you know, unbelievable experience on there. You know, we're very fortunate that when we have students apply for these types of positions, the resumes are always more impressive than any of our resumes. You know, it's, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
That you've done, and that you've started, and that you really did, you know, on your own, even not being a member of this committee. So, you know, I think you'd be a great fit for this committee. Certainly, open it up to others for any comments, discussion, questions?
No questions, but, you know, thank you for applying, and, yeah, your, your resume is very impressive, and I know you, you, you applied last year, and we asked you to come back, so thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Any others?
Thank you.
Hearing, no one? If we could have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to have a question. Can you tell me how to pronounce your, your first and last name?
Tapas Gopalakrishna.
I move we appoint Tapas Gopalakrishna to the student position for the Climate Action Advisory Committee for the term to expire August 31st, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
That's going in. You can add that to your busy schedule. And hopefully we'll see you downtown, maybe with a Rubik's Cube or two.
Yeah, sure.
Blindfolded.
Blindfolded, that's. Have a great night. We have, is Albert here? Albert Puz? All right, not seeing him yet. Is Angineska? Here? Oh, that's just reappearance, sorry. So we can reappoint Angineska and Lisa to the Disability Action Committee? Any discussion on that? Keep it on? Hearing none?
I move we reappoint to the Disability Access Committee, Angineska Jankowska Durham for the term to expire August 31st, 2025, and Lisa Metrandola for the term to expire August 31st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations on your appointment. Is Emily here? Come on up, Emily.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So you're applying to be on the Education Facilities Planning and Building Committee?
Correct.
Great, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
So, my family and I moved to Winchester about two years ago, so we're up in the Morocco School District. I moved to the greater Boston area in 2012, started working for a general contractor, I've been doing that for the past 10, 11 years, kind of slowly moved up. I worked as a project administrator, APM, and now I'm a project manager there. So I run construction projects every day, commercial interior fit-outs mostly, I do some education work, so I've done several projects for Boston University, and I really just wanted to find a way to get involved in the community, and I looked at the town website, and I saw they were looking for a GC to join the education board, and I was like, oh, kind of sounds like a great fit. So, that's why I applied.
Great. Well, we've got your resume, very impressive resume as well. Any questions from any board members?
None for me.
Yeah, so do you, does your company bid on educational facilities projects?
We do, but only for, like, private, so like Boston University, Bentley, this wouldn't be a complicated interest.
Okay, so there wouldn't be?
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions? Appreciate your service. You have school, you have kids in the school district?
Not yet, mine is one and a half, so I have a little bit of time.
Maybe by the time the new schools are built.
Yeah, as I said, as soon as she starts, they'll probably start working on Morocco.
Well, that's great. Well, hearing no discussion, thank you for coming in tonight. Is there a motion to appoint Emily?
I move we appoint Emily DeFlorio to the Education Facilities Planning and Building Committee for the term to expire March 31st, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations, Emily, thank you for your volunteering, and all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Is Eric Demir here? Hey, Eric.
Hello.
Come on up.
It's like the Price is Right.
Exactly. Sorry, you're not going to want a car, though. We're the showcase. But you will be, if you want, on the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee, which is just as good as a new car.
I've heard a lot of good things. I was asked to run for this position. I, you know, has stiff competition, it seems, but.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? We've had your resume from, I think, our last meeting, but certainly, you want to tell us everything?
So, I grew up in Winchester, I actually went to school with your daughter, Lauren. I grew up in Winchester, I actually went to school with your daughter, Lauren.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
All right. You're out.
Right off the bat, um, I've been in the town forever, I'm an aerospace engineer, I focus primarily on hypersonic vehicles and spacecraft development, so there's no real competition or things that you have to worry about when it comes to, you know,
No conflicts?
Yes, exactly. So that's primarily what I do, and one day I got a call from a friend, Deb Chacha, and she said that, so people need this real position filled, and I applied, so it's kinda the quick and, quick way that I got here. I've been in the town forever, it seems, my mom is a teacher, I believe, Mr. Bentoncourt, she has your, one of your children.
Oh, okay.
I actually believe, most likely, probably one of yours.
Yeah.
And I believe that my wife's boss actually has employed you as a lawyer as well, um, she says you're good at your job, by the way.
Oh, boy.
Guys are all close to us, I don't know. They're all gonna be conflicted out by the time this is done. I'm sorry, you can't be a point, there's nowhere to vote for you.
I think I'm good, my kids are...
We didn't anticipate this problem for the Climate Advisory Committee.
So, it's kind of a weird position to be like, I'm really enthusiastic about, but we have a beautiful cemetery, and it's just one of those pieces of Winchester that I like to be a part of, to maintain, take care of, cherish, so, that's pretty much it.
Uh, any questions for Eric? I haven't heard any. Any discussion? All right, I don't think anybody's conflicted out at this point, so, if you wanna vote, but we can check with legal counsels here, we can check.
No more talking, no more talking, you don't wanna know.
We're gonna stop right there.
That way, no one can question it later on.
Great. Uh, is there a motion to appoint Eric, uh, to the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee?
I move we appoint Eric Demir to the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee for the term to expire July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Congratulations, Eric.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. If we see a spacecraft landing in the Wildwood Cemetery, we know when, we know why now, all right? Okay, um, is Albert here? Albert plus? Okay. All right, I think that's all our appointments for now, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we'll find out about Albert, uh, maybe we can come in next time. Uh, at this point, seeing the time at seven fifty, we do have a couple of public hearings, uh, that I did wanna call to order, uh, so if I could just have, uh, Eversource, anyone here from Eversource? Oh, there you are, hiding in the back. How are ya?
Hi, how are you?
Good. Joining us. So this is a grant location for Wendell Street, um, Beth?
Sure, um, so Eversource has, um, submitted a petition for a grant location to install approximately thirty-eight feet of conduit in the public right-of-way across Wendell Street. Uh, the work is necessary, actually, for a town project to supply electrical service to the temporary pump station that we've installed in McDonald Field, um, to improve the water pressures in that neighborhood. DPW engineering have reviewed, and we recommend, uh, that we move forward.
Great. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to comment on this grant of location on Wendell Street? Seeing no one, um, any discussion by board members? I drove by there, uh, this morning, uh, this morning, this afternoon, uh, looks like it's coming along, the, the pump?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually on, um, we turned it on, um, August twenty-ninth, I think, it's, um, serving the neighborhood well, we actually have a, a generator, so we'll be happy to, to get this installed, we can get rid of the generator, so, yeah, yep.
Okay, hearing no discussion, is there a motion?
I move we approve the Eversource grant of location for Wendell Street to install thirty-eight feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to provide electric service to the temporary water booster station on McDonald Field.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Passes, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, our next public hearing involves a change to one parking space at the corner of Thompson and Waterfield Street to fifteen-minute parking, this is a spot right in front of Black Horse Tavern. And I see, uh, Jim here tonight, I'll recognize you in a minute, uh, when we get to the public comment, um, but certainly, Beth, um, if there's anything that you wanna add to this request?
I don't think so, no.
Any discussion, we've gotten a couple of emails, I'm not sure if everyone saw them, uh, that came through late today, uh, that were sent to us, just a public comment, um, well, actually, I will open it up to the public for comment first, before we have any discussions, is there anyone here who wishes to, to comment on this parking space change to fifteen-minute parking in front of Black Horse Tavern on Waterfield Street? Seeing no one, uh, we'll open up the discussion now, so what do you guys think of this?
So the, the emails, somebody was just concerned there was precedent setting in that Y there.
Yep.
But how about if this was sunsetted?
I'm sorry?
How about if this was sunsetted? To coincide with the construction? Cause that was the intent, right?
Yep. So we've, we've kind of set a precedent in different areas of the town during, you know, construction and, and COVID, we have, we put, um, a fifteen-minute parking, uh, spot in front of Alina's Grill on, on Main Street, um, we have one on the corner of, um, Converse, uh, Converse Place, uh, where Lucia's, kinda in between Lucia's and, um, I don't even remember the name, China Sky. So, I mean, we've done it a couple of times in town, but, you know, I understand, you know, the concerns, it's a valid concern, um, you know, that, you know, if we offer, if we keep expanding this, then, you know, everyone's gonna want a fifteen-minute spot in front of their restaurant, which is, you know, a well-taken concern. You know, I think, um, this area, we have already, uh, in front of the post office, I think, I think they're fifteen or twenty-minute parking spots in front of the, fifteen minutes? You know, during the, I think it stops, it's, at when the post office closes, though, right? Is that?
I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, but, uh, you know, this is, was a request, um, you know, in conjunction with, you know, the MBTA construction and, um, you know, certainly, you know, Black Horse is, you know, literally right in the throngs of it, um, and, um, you know, there's been some parking spaces taken at times underneath the bridge, underneath, um, you know, the sidewalks taken, and sooner that's gonna be barricaded off on that, um, if you're driving down Watertown, Watertown, Waterfield Street to the middle school on the right-hand side, so certainly understand the request, um, and sunsetting it to when the MBTA finishes constructions may not be a bad idea, so, um, but I think,
Good idea.
I mean, yeah, a good idea.
We can review it seasonally with, you know, our, you know, applications for outdoor dining, I mean, I think that for this particular location, um, it, you know, the Black Horse Tavern is really prevented from outdoor dining during the day, I mean, I, Mr. Covino has sent us, um, at least a couple of us, a, a video of the jackhammering, you know, that is, you know, in front of there, I mean, you can't sit outside when that is going on, right? So it's almost like, you know, other restaurants that have access to outdoor dining, um, he's precluded from that because of that, can't open the windows in the front 'cause of the dust, I mean, it is right there, um, so, but to John's point, um, it's going to cease at some point, um, I, I think even with the construction kind of slowing down a little bit at a certain point, and, uh, you know, but for the time being, it seems a, a temporary, at least allowing it for the, this, this permit period, um, just is, is a no-brainer.
Yeah, and the only thing I'll say to that, too, is, I mean, Beth, we've talked about this, is, uh, we kinda got derailed a little bit in our downtown action plan and the parking changes that we were looking to make globally, uh, down, down there with, you know, the advances in technology and enforcement, you know, and, and kinda creating a circular pattern for people to understand, you know, whether it's thirty minutes, an hour, two hours, whatever we're going for, um, just to train behavior down there, so people know, so, you know, obviously, when we look at that, which I think we're gonna start getting into soon, um, you know, it makes sense maybe to, to look at this again, uh, at that time, but certainly for now, I would agree, um, I think, you know, this makes sense, given, you know, the, what's going on right outside the doors at this point.
And it's not just for his, it's not just for Michael's, right? This is just a fifteen-minute spot, right?
Right.
Sorry, Anthony.
I was just gonna say, I think, um, you know, having sort of tried to phase out, but I do wonder if maybe it's tied to, you know, while those spaces are taken for outdoor dining, um, but once we hit, as I said, November, you know, when, when the outdoor dining is gone, there's also gonna open up spaces there, and I don't know if that changes the, the post office space as well, once those are cars across the street. Seems like, the spots under the bridge opened recently, and then, you know, you're gonna get three or four spaces back up in a month or two.
Right. And I think the only change in the post office, and I don't know if this will change, once the outdoor dining's down, Beth, will they still need to block off that space?
I think they do, because if a car is parked there, it's the same issue, where you with the turning, yeah.
So, I have a couple of concerns, um, you know, I don't wanna conflate it with outdoor dining, outdoor dining, to me, benefits every, all the, uh, businesses in, in the town center, I was, um, on Saturday, sitting outdoors, uh, and, uh, there were people coming in, putting their names in, and then, you know, there was a thirty-minute wait, they'd get texted for their table, so they would walk, go walk around and go to the other businesses. A pickup spot doesn't do that, right? A pickup spot only is for the business that it's in front of, right? It doesn't benefit all the other businesses, so I understand the concern that the other businesses have, that, well, outdoor dining helps them, because it brings more people to the town center that will then walk around while waiting for a table, or before or after dining, whereas a pickup spot in front of a business is a parking spot that is gone and doesn't help the other businesses, so I understand that concern from the other businesses. And, um, my concern is that retails will ask for fifteen-minute spots for pickup for theirs, because people can order, uh, over the phone or online with a retail location, and then they can go pick it up, so I think we need a plan that is more than just one request at a time. At the same time, I know Black Horse Tavern has been affected more than anybody else by the construction, and they haven't been able to open windows and, and use the outdoor dining so, um, as much as the other restaurants, so I'm inclined to vote in favor of this one, but I am concerned that we're going to get a lot more requests for fifteen-minute, uh, for retail, and, um, so I think we need more of a plan, but for now, I, I think it's okay to do this, but we aren't, I think we're going to be reviewing it very soon.
Yeah, and I don't disagree, I mean, about the review there, um, and, you know, Tool, our traffic consultants, and their study, you know, for parking downtown, have, have recommended, you know, that that whole, you know, they have circular, you know, a circular plan, uh, that, you know, that area of town, you know, Main Street, Thompson Street, that area be all thirty-minute targeted parking, uh, and then if you're coming for longer than that, you kinda go to the next circle out, which is, you know, upper Main Street area, um, you know, upper Church Street area, and that would be like one hour, two hours, and then, you know, up that way, so, you know, to that, and the, and the basis for that is that, you know, they feel that those people that are circling around, uh, that wanna park right in front of the store and really need that spot, they're doing target, spot, they're doing targeting shopping, and, you know, maybe they're running into CVS, maybe they're running into Bookends, or, or Sweet Surprise, or something like that, to grab something, and, you know, if we can free up those spaces, you know, that would be beneficial. My concern, whether it's fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, an hour, is enforcement, um, you know, we need to really commit ourselves to enforcement, um, in the downtown, I mean, I know that's a tough, you know, thing for people to, to swallow, but if you're gonna have these, you know, short time periods, you know, enforcement is the key, uh, because, you know, without it, you know, it doesn't matter what you put on the sign, so, and that's, and that's my concern.
Yeah, how are we going to enforce this fifteen-minute?
Well, same way we enforce everything else, so...
Yeah, I mean, it is harder, obviously, I don't think there's gonna be somebody walking by there for fifteen minutes, but it is adjacent to the other fifteen-minute spaces in front of the post office, so, um, you know, it's kind of contiguous with some already existing spaces there.
Well, I mean, we'll figure out a way.
Yeah, we can give Mr. Covino some tickets to put out on windows if people park there, so it's, uh...
We'll figure it out.
Um, the other issue with that particular location, um, is, you know, right near the crosswalk there, and what I've seen, just anecdotally, is people just, for takeout, just park in the crosswalk, and, um, it's really dangerous, that, that area in particular, um, is, is tough access because of the brick and kind of the way that the street comes down, and visibility is low, so it's, uh, it makes it ten times worse when there is a car right there parked in the crosswalk, which I, I, I feel like there is all, like, constantly, so...
That gets fixed with a raised crosswalk.
Oh, there you go.
Well, if we do the downtown action plan, and we fix all the sidewalks and bump them up, that whole Thompson's,
We just need to do one raised crosswalk.
That whole Thompson Plaza becomes something different.
And then all the crosswalks will be raised, and it'll be, uh, good.
So it sounds like, you know, we're all in support of this, net, for now, um, you know, always subject to review as we go through the parking, um, you know, parameters, and we look at those in the future, so, um, is there a motion to approve this fifteen-minute parking spot request?
Do we want to add kind of what John suggested around the, some sort of timing?
I mean, my, my, my choice would be to leave it open at this point, 'cause I think in the very near future, we're gonna be looking at parking as a whole in the area, um, but, I mean, I'm certainly happy to adopt it, I just don't wanna commit to something then, you know, say, well, you know what, we're gonna actually change it sooner than that, because we're, we have this grand plan. So, that's just my only concern with that, I don't think it's a, I think it's a good suggestion, but, uh, you know.
I think that since it's a fifteen-minute spot for anybody, and it's not just a pickup spot for Black Horse Tavern, right? I mean, it's the same as the one in front of the, um, is that fifteen-minute, or is that thirty-minute?
For the post office?
Post office.
I thought it was fifteen, but it, it could be thirty.
I mean, somebody could still park there and go to Sweet Surprise in fifteen minutes, so, you know. I don't think we need an end date, I think we'll, I think we'll end it for any end date we set.
I think Mr. Covino wants to speak as well.
Jimmy, wanna say something?
Yeah, just, do you want me to come up there?
Sure, come on up.
You know, I, I think a lot of people here, I, I was a police officer thirty years, I walked a beat down there for many years, I don't remember the last time that that place wasn't a fifteen-minute parking space, that place has been a fifteen-minute parking space for years, that's something new that has just came and became what it is, a regular one-hour parking space now. I thought I was here to talk about, you know, getting a, to-go water space, and that was based on, you know, the, the conundrum that we're in now down there with the construction war zone, you know, I thought that maybe there was gonna be some lenience for, um, for a, a takeout food spot, but now I hear you talking fifteen minutes, some of you are saying thirty, that place has always been a fifteen-minute spot, and it was, I think it was done for the post office, you know, um, that particular spot that we're talking about, always, forever, I remember, I, you had already tickets here before, so, you know, I don't know where this is all going, um, I was hoping for a takeout spot, I'll take the take, I'll take the fifteen-minute, but the reason why I'm telling you it's been a fifteen-minute spot for years and years and years, and all of a sudden it's not, and what's the harm in putting it back at fifteen minutes? You know, it'll, it'll help the po, it'll help the post office, it'll help probably with an open spot for somebody to come take out their food, uh, and you, you mentioned, Mariano mentions, um, other, other businesses, well, if they were in our shoes, I'd say yes, other businesses should be, have the same kind of situation, but I don't wanna get into the long list of things, uh, that are going on with the, uh, with having that construction war zone in front of our place, right on top of us, six feet away, um, and the list goes on and on, so, that's what I'm looking for, a little, you know, give and take from you people to help out with, uh, the situation that we're in, you know, fifteen minutes, I mean, I'll take it, it's better than what it is now, but, um, I'd really like to have the, uh, takeout, takeout space, but if you can't do it, I understand, uh, I do wanna leave you with these, though, as far as, hmm, what's going on with the, is each pick, each, each packet has, is the same one, only it, it's, I did it off of a video, uh, of people in the crosswalk, or that are at the crosswalk, elderly people with their canes, the guy with his, uh, with his baby, I mean, just re-look at them all, and you'll see, I mean, that was just there for, that was, one of them was one car, and the other one was another car, but that's, that was like ten, fifteen minutes, that stuff was going on, and I, and I only did it one day, I mean, not even for a day, I was there for lunch, and I go, wait a minute, I gotta get this.
Yeah, circulating, I'm, I'm, you're wondering.
And having said that, I mean, that's a whole different story in and of itself, you know, but there is a lot of illegal parking going on down there, because of the, uh, situation with no parking, you know, but...
So I don't know when it was changed to an hour, if it had been historically a fifteen-minute parking spot, but certainly, we can, we can, we can,
For a long time.
We can change it back tonight, uh, if that's what, you know, we're looking to do.
It's, it's been, it's been a long time.
Yep, and hopefully that, you know,
It was, it was when I was a cop.
So hopefully that eases, you know, the people parking in the sidewalk, and it gives your, your patrons, you know, an easier time to get their takeout food, so...
Yeah, I misunderstood the request a little bit, I thought it was for a fifteen-minute, I thought it was for a 15-minute, I thought that's what we were talking about, but, you know, if it was for specifically a takeout, I mean, I certainly would consider that, to John's point, connected to the construction timeline, it may be reviewable, you know, on, you know, the timeline of the outdoor dining permits, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is that we didn't, we didn't post it that way, so it's...
Oh, we, is that's why, okay.
It's 15-minute.
It's 15-minute.
Oh, that's why I was confused, okay, all right.
Yeah, I was surprised, like, even you were talking 15 minutes.
Oh, okay.
I was just going to say that thing's been 15 minutes forever, and it just got changed to an hour.
I, I think we started kind of putting those 15-minute spots for, just got confused, it's not a, not a big deal, but we can, we can review it.
So, so we can do the 15-minute parking tonight, and then obviously parking is a fluid situation in this town, that's always a hot topic, and we can always, you know, review it anytime, you know, change it, so. But, you know, it is posted as a 15-minute parking spot on our public hearings list, so that's, that's all we can do tonight. So is there a motion?
I move we change one parking space at the corner of Thompson and Waterfield to 15-minute parking.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, hearing none? All right. So that space will be in front of Black Horse.
Do you know when that will be done?
Uh, we'll have to talk to Jay, and see when he can change the sign with the screwdriver.
Well, you know, it's better than nothing, anything will help at this point.
And feel free to come back to us with that request for the takeout, it just didn't, just didn't turn out that, I know.
I get tired.
I know.
All right, I'll see you.
Yeah. All right, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We are going to go now, we're bouncing around a little bit, but we're going to go to public comment. So I'll remind the audience, you know, under the select board policies, we welcome public comment on anything on our agenda, you have up to three minutes, you can come, raise your hand, join us at the table, and state your name and your address, and make your public comment. So, is there anyone here for public comment? Come on up.
Sorry, is this for the development? This one street development?
Yep.
How are you?
Thank you very much, thank you members of the board. How you doing, Mike? My name is Tom Voltaire, and I'm a resident of 24 Chester Street, and I am in abut to the proposed project on Swanton Street. In the outset, I'd say I'm pleased to see that there is some progress being made at this property. Certainly been sat vacant for quite a number of years. And I do have a number of my neighbors here, although some could not make it, so I am speaking on, on their behalf. Been a real estate attorney for about 20 years, so I've seen many of these type of projects come and go. So to, to lay the foundation of where Chester Street is, Chester Street is adjacent to the Morocco School District. We have lots of kids on the street in the neighborhood, we have the tri-community bike path that's, you know, in the street next to ours, so we have a lot of foot and bike traffic on our street. I mean, kids play in the street, they skateboard up and down driveways, they don't look, they're little. And our concern with this development is a lack of onsite parking. So I, I looked at the parking plans, and it appears that the, there's insufficient parking for, for guests, for contractors, for deliveries. And again, I know this is just early stage of the project, the spaces aren't labeled yet, but it seems as if the developer has not considered things like the Super Bowl and Thanksgiving, and, you know, when its landscaping crew comes with the four trucks. So, you know, that would be, and just to give one example, what we don't want in Chester Street is our street to become the designated parking space for all these, you know, all of these folks. I know this is not, it's not a perfect picture, but I just took a photo of a truck parked... Sorry, Mike.
That's all right. Thank you.
Just an example, a truck parked on our street, and what that truck is blocking is the view of children who skateboard up and down that driveway. So, that's one truck, you multiply that by several, and now you have a safety issue. So, you know, what I would ask in this proposal is for the developer to identify the, the guest parking, the, the non-permanent spaces, you know, those temporal spaces, and to draft rules and regulations showing how it plans to enforce onsite parking. Whether that's a lease clause, rules and regulations, but something to say that it is keeping an eye on the neighborhood. And, you know, I would ask that that, those regulations would be part of the final permitting approval. Because what we don't want is for the neighborhood to become the designated parking authority. And there's been extensive debate on email over this topic, and some people say, oh, the police will deal with it. As this discussion today about downtown, enforcement is a major issue, and if you can't even enforce the downtown spots, I don't think that you're going to come to Swanton Street and enforce parking in that area. And certainly Winchester Police have other priorities than to enforce, you know, neighborhood parking issues. So that said, again, I don't support or oppose this project, and I certainly would support it if adequate off-street parking is considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public here for public comments this evening? Come on up.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. So I'm Lisa DiMaro, I'm at 259 Washington Street, so good to meet you all. Um, I don't have any pictures, I can certainly send them to you, though. I just came in because I am concerned about the parking as well. I find that I, my home is right at the corner of Hancock and Washington, so I have the benefit of living across the street from what is already an existing condo type of a setup. And very often, we have parking just all over the place, and those pictures, I'll send that over to this council, really show that. And I've had numerous calls with Winchester Police, they're a wonderful group, but they are overwhelmed, so they'll come and they'll take care of the situation, but the ongoing monitoring of that is very limited. I've asked for information about tickets that say have been issued on overnight parking during the winter, because that continues on Washington Street and Hancock, even though we know as a town we don't allow it, but it continues, and they just cannot, I don't want to say prioritize, because they're a great group, but there, there's just too few of them to be taking care of that. So I think the, the data there will show that they're not able to enforce that, that would be one piece. The second piece that I, I'd really like to have this group consider is that the survey information that's been provided to date is in fact dated. It was done back in 2019. I'd like to see that data reconsidered. I'm fine with the idea, if the neighborhood has, has been discussed in various emails, if the neighborhood supports a commercial mixed-use setting, I'm good with whatever the right answer is. But I do want to see updated information. That neighborhood, like most of Winchester, has seen an enormous amount of churn with regard to real estate, and, and these current neighbors, I don't think actually have been engaged in that kind of conversation. I want to see the property developed, just to make sure we're all clear, the ISO that we have there right now really has to be remediated. But I just want to make sure that we're living within the guardrails of, of what is best for the town, what's best from a zoning perspective, which brings me to one other thing. So I understand that the property has 16 units that are part of the 60, 80% AMI calculation, and as such, those spots only require one parking spot. But there is another 44 parking, or units, that will be of regular income, and as such, currently, the proposal says, I believe, 90 spots. Based on those calculations and zoning requirements, then that would require at least 104 spots, and at a minimum, that's what I think should be required there, just like it would be required of any one of our citizens here in the town. So that's my comments. I really appreciate being able to provide that to you, and I look forward to see how this group works with this new project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here for public comment? Come on up.
Good evening.
Hi.
Chris Folsky, Joe Chris Folsky, 19 Chester Street, diagonally from Tommy Galato. I've lived at Chester Street for 28 years, and raised two daughters, along with other neighbors in the neighborhood that have raised a number of kids. I also was a public servant as a high school science teacher, and in watching my daughters as we moved into the neighborhood 28 years ago, the neighbors quickly reminded me that I had to keep a good eye on my daughters. And I said, why? And they said Chester Street is used as a cutthroat. And I says, what does that mean? And they say, people that come up Swanton Street that don't want to hit the lights come through Chester Street, and then either take Irving or Harvard to get back off of Washington. And in the morning, they come down Irving or Harvard and use Chester Street to dodge the light, and then do their circles or wherever they go from there. The first couple of years we lived there, Tommy was just a little boy, I think he might have been 12 or 13 or something like that when I moved into the neighborhood, and I would see the fathers coming out, and I'm not a big guy, and I'd see him telling, slow down, slow down, with the kids playing on the sidewalks. And it's a, Joe, come on over and help us. And I go, no, I'm a public servant. I'm not a police officer, I'm not going to tell anybody to slow down, you know? So, Tommy's on cue, the other lady that spoke on, I can understand where she's coming from, and I just wanted to add that, that 28 years living there, going on 29, coming this November, that I've lived there, and as a public servant working with kids, that's been going on for all that time. So if we can address that, or put that in some notes or something to let that be known, that that is, Chester Street is used as a cutthroat, cutthroat, uh, cutthroat, since I've been living there for 28 and a half years. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? Come on up.
Thank you. How are you?
Doing well, thank you. My name is Warren Montgomery, I'm at 265 Washington Street, probably been in the town now almost 28 years myself, and just the concern of adding the size of this complex to the neighborhood without having, including the appropriate parking is part of my, you know, concern, a large part of the concern, because, you know, when I first came to this town, we used to have parking on both sides of Washington Street, and, you know, that changed, and you lost half that, now we're down to one side. So, you know, I just want to make sure that whatever is built is built in a reasonable size, but also trying to maximize the usage of the parking, being one of the higher, you know, priorities on the list, as opposed to, you know, maybe pocket parks and some of the other things. So, you know, I just wanted to at least kind of get that stated out there. The other thing I had some concern about was some of these surveys that were done, and I didn't know how they got filled out or where they got filled out, but, you know, as far as being a part of that, being in that area, I was never asked, so. I don't know if there's a, was a survey that the town did that sent it out to the folks, you know, or if it was just from a meeting that somebody had done, but, you know, if there is going to be something, I think it'd be nice to have a, more of a group around that area that might have some input. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Come on up.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you? Hi, Richard.
Nick Rosettos, 2 Pine Street in Winchester, also a member of the planning board. Please forgive me, I'm, i-if, if some of the timing of my comments are not exactly in line of where you are, but I, my comments are going to be focused on the design of the building, and it's really exciting. This, this building is, it's got a lot of nice features, it's got the vertically proportioned double-hung windows, the full pediment on the roof. And I, I guess, first I've got a question, so is this the last time that the public will be able to opine on the design of the building? Or is there going to be an ongoing process with regard to that? But I'll, I'll take the answer at the end, you know, if I may continue.
Sure.
So I was hoping, as I'm thinking about the design, and I did not have a chance to get this to you prior, so I'd like to express my thoughts now. Number one, I, I think it's important to look at as many designs as possible, have conversations with architects who are passionate about the traditionalist space here in Winchester, meet extensively with the design review committee. These are committed individuals who know an incredible amount and have volunteered their time, and who are passionate about Winchester. Meet continuously with these individuals throughout every step of the process, set up a joint committee if needed. Don't be afraid to put the time in to come up with a great design. Ultimately, that's what is going to be your legacy, is this building that everyone sees. I, I wrote, it may make sense to scrap this design entirely and select another from the many you should be looking at. Again, except my apologies if the timing of that comment is not necessarily where it should be perhaps. It may be better to look at this as the beginning of a conversation, the bad idea that leads to the good ones down the road. There are a small number of firms which specialize in traditionalist buildings, which are doing some amazing work using modern materials, make sure you speak with them. Whatever design you choose, we can still be a great powerhouse of density and diversity, but we don't have to give up on style to get there. My number five, if Winchester had a brand, a distinctive style, that sets us apart from any number of communities around here, what would that be? Think about that. For example, colleges and universities have stylistic brands that they nurture. I guess sort of an aside, don't compromise on the design to get the last unit in, to meet some arbitrary numerical target. If you can't get them all in, just let the last one go. Again, use the dedicated volunteers of the design review committee. They have lived here, or they've lived in New England long enough to have developed a sense of our aesthetic. The thing that we moved to Winchester for, that maybe we don't understand the history or the particular forms, but we love Winchester, and, and those details are very, are really important. So I wrote, make sure you have, you look at drawings from firms that specialize in traditionalist New England architecture. The use of clapboard, the new, the new concrete clapboard is very convincing as a, as an architectural tool. And finally, think about why you moved here. What do you love about Winchester? And out of that love and passion will come the design that you ultimately settle on. So I appreciate, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick. Anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment for the evening. At this point, we're going to go right into Washington Swanton Street, I think it's a good segue. So I'd invite Brian, if you want to come on up.
I'm running to the bathroom, Richard.
Yep.
Sorry.
Jay, I don't know if you want, Jay and Liz, if you want to join us at the table, or you want to stay there, it's totally up to you. Anyone else here? I thank you all for joining us this evening to talk about Washington Swanton Street. We thought it would be a good idea just to have Legal here, have Brian, the town planner here, just to, as we go through this project. So, Brian, I'm going to start with you, because we just did hear a bunch of comments from the public about parking, and, you know, appropriate parking and the survey, so I guess as the town planner, if you, if you wanted to just opine on that.
Sure. Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about the survey. So a survey was sent out in May of 2019 to a little over 100 residents. It was coupled with a letter from Brian Malanson inviting the neighborhood to a neighborhood meeting at the Sons of Italy to discuss ideas about the project, so there was no, so, just that. So, one, the survey went out to, to those 100 or so houses. We also had paper copies of the survey at, at that meeting for anyone who wanted to fill it out and send it to me. So that was the one survey that was performed, May of 2019. In terms of parking, for most of the new developments, whether they are, have, whether they have affordable housing or not, if they're within about a half a mile, maybe 15-minute walk or, or less, to a, a train station, the, the typical parking ratio is, is one per unit. In other more rural areas, maybe that's different, but a lot of the way that this works is that it's anywhere between about 70 and 100 or a little bit more, 70,000 and $100,000 per space to create structured parking, which is what this is. This is, there's a little bit of surface parking, but most of it's structured parking. So that's kind of where the cost comes in, but in terms of their ratio of one unit per space, this was based upon, you know, not just the town coming out with a potential parking ratio. So we sat down with several, with architects and housing finance, financial planners to come up with a, what is a reasonable number of units, and what is a reasonable amount of parking, and that's where it landed at, at one. I don't know if you had any other specific questions about...
So just explain, the survey that Mr. Malanson sent out, that was in conjunction with attempt of a private sale, that wasn't part of this process, that was, you know, talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. So the survey that was sent out was like a four-question survey, basically saying, do you want to see commercial here only? Do you want to see residential here only? Or do you want to see a mixed-use development? That was, that was part of the major parts of the, of the, of the survey. The majority of, of people wanted a mixed-use property. Yes... Yes, there probably has been some turnover in the neighborhood since twenty nineteen. Um, I've been here about eight years. This project has been on the horizon for nearly that time. Right when I came in is when the CV, about six months later, the CVS, um, uh, appeal went through. So it's kind of been mulling about this whole time. And what I've heard personally, um, you, you could say that it's anecdotal, but what I've heard personally is that people generally did want to see a mixed-use property there. They certainly did not want commercial only, um, because they felt it would, it would generate too much traffic. And they didn't want residential only because a lot of the people in the neighborhood wanted to be able to walk to something. They, they didn't necessarily say what, whether it's a, a cafe or a small shop. Uh, but this was not necessarily, you know, kinda pushed by the town. This was involved with residents as well. The RFP specifically had two neighborhood, uh, members as part of the RFP group. We relied on them for neighborhood sentiment as well, who, who, who concluded that generally, it's not everyone, you're not gonna make everybody happy, but generally that a mixed-use property was more favorable than, than another type of property.
And this has ninety parking spots, right?
This, yeah, it, there's sixty units.
Yep.
And there are sixty space, uh, the, the, um, the ratio is, yeah, sixty for the, um, for the residents and then there's thirty that are kind of indiscriminate for some commercial, maybe some guest parking, but it hasn't been decided and nothing is, they, they just need to, they need to map out how many spaces can physically fit and that's what they found.
So I invited Jay and Liz as well, just to talk about the, um, LDA agreement as well. If there were questions about, you know, entering into an LDA or anything like that. So certainly, you know, feel free, you know, to discuss, uh, that as well. Any comments on this? Any questions for Brian? What do we think about this?
I mean, tour of Lee, one parking space per unit doesn't sound like enough, but I asked this question before and was assured that with the way people live now, especially the proximity to downtown, that's adequate. I assume that you've thoroughly fair that open neighbors have expressed it. I'm gonna put you on the spot, but I'm just like, you know.
No, 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 uh, it's not on the spot. They, um, we've been having a dialogue this whole time, so this is not, this is not something new. What I've been saying is that, um, first of all, so this is a, usually it's twenty-five percent at eighty. Uh, twenty-five percent of the units would be deed restricted at eighty percent of AMI, I believe. This is twenty percent at sixty. The idea of someone at a sixty percent, um, of AMI having two cars is highly unlikely, even potentially even having one car. So that's twenty percent of the units, I'm assuming, will have zero or one car. And then the next logical question is like, okay, great, Brian, what, what about, what about the other forty that have, you know, two kids with the high school student and everything? They can only park where they can park, meaning that if we can, we can put parking restrictions on Chester Street, any, any, any street that we, that the Select Board wants to put more parking restrictions on, they can. The assumption is that, um, or I guess the worst-case scenario is that someone comes in, they got four cars and they're just like space hopping all over, all over town. Um, and, you know, Brian, what are we gonna do about that? And, you know, enforcement is certainly a problem, um, but to answer your question directly, I'm, based upon not just me, but, uh, based upon the architects and housing financial planners that have helped us through this process, based upon new construction, relatively, this is not center business district, but it's, it's close enough, um, one unit per, one space per unit is, right now, in Eastern Mass, kind of the standard.
Thank you.
Other discussion points? So it's, go ahead.
Oh, I, I got something.
You don't, you don't.
I can, I always can, right? But, um, no, I, I, I think that one of the things that we committed earl- to early on this project is, um, the traffic study, which, um, the development is, you know, going to carry out, um, and, um, and really taking a look at, um, what we can do to minimize the impact, um, on streets like Chester and the surrounding neighborhood, um, you know, to the point of the neighbors. Um, it's not what signs we put, it's the enforcement, right? So we, you know, we really do have to talk about that as part of the traffic study, especially, I mean, in that whole area. I mean, it's going to be a massive change of use there, um, with, um, you know, space, I mean, the, the property has not been performing for the community in any way really for the last decade almost. And so, um, it will, there, it'll be more than just the impact on Chester Street, it'll be a lot for, um, the whole area. So I think that we, uh, really need to zero in, uh, a little bit more on, um, uh, not just some of the, the sign changes and, uh, you know, restricting it to residential use and all that, but really en- enforcing it there and, um, uh, more, more than we, we typically have done in the past because, um, it's hard for our law enforcement to, to, um, to, to be there every minute of the day. Um, so, um, and I, and I think that the, the building and the facility, the, um, they'll be good partners with us as well. I think that that's, that's part of what we see and I think that's why, um, originally when this project was discussed with the neighborhood, um, there was a large public meeting and there's been several since then, right? So we, this was part of, uh, the master plan process as well that was discussed, part of the housing production plan and part of those original, um, meetings that happened with the neighborhood and then, uh, another meeting that happened, uh, at the Sons of Italy, um, where the original, um, proposal by, uh, Mr. Malanson was proposed. So, um, I, I think we just, just need to, um, really hone in on the, the change of use for the neighborhood and that impact and how to enforce it. Um, and, you know, the, the commercial space there, um, you know, I, I think is, is necessary as part of the project. That's what we put out in the RFP. I think we would probably get some, uh, protests from some other developers that, um, pulled the RFP, that if we changed that, they would have an issue with the legality of, um, the process moving forward if that was, that was removed there and those units, uh, that space, that square footage was changed to residential. So.
To expand a little bit on that, so there's evaluation criteria for this RFP. We talked about levels of importance for these, these criteria. The housing goals were five X. Having a commercial component was three ti- was three X, it was three times. Showing the applicants that this is extremely important, that a, a mix, a, I believe it was, um, "Commercial storefronts along Washington Street." That was the exact wording in the criteria, um, that you would get the most amount of points if you provided storefronts along Washington Street. So like Mike said, that it's, you know, and maybe this is more of a question for MTC, um, of if this was in the RFP basically as, as point scale, um, I don't believe that we could potentially change that, but if there was only one respondent, I don't, I don't know. Out of my league.
So if, um, for the record, I'm Melissa Leyden. If somebody were to not respond because of that, that is correct, that, um, there could be a protest based on, uh, what was seemingly required versus what is allowed, so.
So. Thank you.
Others?
I think to the mention of parking and traffic, uh, people who are renting in an apartment building tend to know what restrictions they're going in with, so, you know, with the renting and having one space per unit and knowing that, um, you know, if it's a roommate situation, you and your roommate need to figure out who has a car or what that looks like, but, uh, as it relates to kind of what was brought up around visitor parking and, and parking in the neighborhood, I, I do think that's an area where there can be some thought to how that's managed or enforced of the, the spaces in excess of those that are, are given to apartments and something, um, that can be considered and how that impacts Washington Street, Chester. I know Holland maybe tends to already have some restrictions around high school parking, so there are, you know, things that have been done on the edges of the neighborhood.
It's also likely that there could be some shared parking, so you have a commercial entity that's really opened up during the day, but at nighttime, those spaces wouldn't be used. We could generate some type of a shared parking situation where, timing-wise, that after a certain time, they're no longer commercial spots and they're open to guests and, you know, other, other residents. So that's something that we could talk about in the permitting stage.
And Brian, just, there was, it did come up in public comment, I just wanna reiterate. This, this is the beginning of this project.
Permitting hasn't even started.
Yeah. So, I mean, the, the public, uh, you know, in terms of commenting and fine-tuning this proposal, uh, I mean.
Still building the car, not, rubber has not hit the road yet.
Right. So we, uh, there's, there's probably months, if not.
Yeah, so, um, I can talk super brief about that.
Sure.
So a typical forty B is a maximum of six months for permitting. Typically, it's in the three to six month, three to six month range with meeting fairly often, like once a month. So, and there could be, it could be a lot more than that. Sometimes towards the end, you could be meeting three times in a month. But, you know, the whole apple is there, many bites can, can happen. Once permitting starts is really when the traffic study gets start, like, when all, all these studies actually get going and residents and boards and committees can actually start reacting to the project. It's unclear if that design that they put forth is really the design that they're gonna perm, that they're gonna go through permitting with. My guess is that, um, they will probably revise some drawings between now and then and then it will get revised during, you know, during the process. That is typically what happens.
Thank you for confirming that.
Sure.
So what's the next step for our board?
Uh, next step for our board is tonight, we need to approve, uh, if we're going to, moving forward to entering, to presenting an LDA at town meeting. And then what we would do is we would work to draft an LDA, uh, between now, um, and, you know, before town meeting, get it to town meeting members for approval at town meeting. And that would be the next step. Am I correcting that?
Yeah. If, for those who do, LDA, a land disposition agreement for.
And does that inclu- does that mean, like, are we accepting the RFP? I mean, is there any legal, like, step that we have to take tonight? Because I know we got an RFP response, so. Or is it just authorizing?
I mean, I'll defer to, to Jay and Liz, but I would assume we would need to vote to move forward with the RFP and to begin negotiations on our land development agreement.
I think you'd be voting to, um, move for Malanson, um, 'cause we already issued the RFP.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Malanson, sorry. What was that? Mike? I see you nodding.
Yeah, no, no.
Good.
So you, you would be putting an art, the Select Board would be putting an article on the fall town meeting warrant, um, to transfer the land to Malanson as owners. As part of that, we would be similar to what we did for the waterfield lot, we'd be putting together a land development agreement that would go to town meeting, uh, as part of the package.
Who'll be negotiating the LDA with Malanson?
So ultimately, we would vote on it. You know, I'm, I'm happy to take the lead on the LDA again.
Deja vu.
Me too. And if someone wants to help out, happy to have somebody help out with it.
Happy to.
Yep. I think, a couple of things, I think, uh, this may not, hopefully, if we move forward, hopefully it won't be as difficult because we've already, um, kicked around a draft of a LDA. I know, uh, Jay's office, uh, and Liz need to comment on that and obviously, you know, make it their own, but, um, you know, it's a different type of deal, uh, so.
It's disposition.
Yeah, it's a, it's a sale, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna be business partners, so, um, you know, I, I think, uh, hopefully it's, it's a little quicker, uh, and a little less time-consuming, but, um, certainly we would need, you know, several weeks to do that. That's why I think we need to move on this tonight, uh, in order to make sure that we get that in, in the hands of town meeting beforehand for them to consider, you know, in due diligence.
And when do we need to decide on the, how we fund the rest, whether it's ARPA money or?
So I think there's gonna be a lot of questions around that as we head to town meeting, right? So I think, you know, certainly we as a board, if we're gonna move this proposal forward, I think we would wanna talk about, you know, is that gonna come out of ARPA or is that, you know, some other fund, uh, funding mechanism? I think we'd wanna, you know, go into town meeting with that decided. You know, I think, you know, to get sixteen units of affordable housing, uh, you know, for, you know, one point two, one point three million dollars, I think that's, you know, a great deal in this town. So, um, you know, my preference, and it's just my preference, would be that we, you know, set aside money from ARPA in here market for this project. That would be my preference, but, and, you know, I think, as we go through the process, if, if we're able to decide that, you know, sooner rather than later, even if it's tonight or, or next meeting or so, it would just aid in the process as we market it.
That's why I'm asking. I, I also think that that's a great use of ARPA money. Um, a, a lot of municipalities are using ARPA money for affordable housing and we know it's, we have a dire need for affordable housing here and, like you said, using, um, one point something million for sixteen affordable units is something that we couldn't get anywhere else, um, in town, uh, for that value. So I am fully in favor of using ARPA money for that shortfall, so that we can pay off the, the ban on that.
Others thoughts on either?
Yeah, I agree with that and, as I said, I'm happy to help you with the, uh, LDA, Rich. Um, and, uh, you know, with, when the ARPA funds were first issued, affordable housing was one of the primary purposes for it. So I think it expanded a little bit and, um, but we always intended for there to be a substantial portion, uh, of that money used for affordable housing. So it's, um, uh, it, it makes sense and it's kinda consistent from where we were, uh, at the very beginning of the process, so.
I think also in this process, you know, if you talk about next steps, I, I did talk to, uh, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. I think there's some interest in putting together some type of little working group with Stacy and just to run the numbers, uh, and, you know, if there's a member from here, this committee that wants to be on it, um, with staff, just so that we present, uh, two town meeting, one set of finances numbers from the town rather than just, you know, some member of FinCom or something like that. So, um, that was their idea, um, and I think it's a, it's a good idea. I've talked to staff a little bit about it, but I think that would be, if we do approve it tonight, that would be one of the next steps as well, uh, if somebody wants to, you know, volunteer to, to work with them and Stacy and others, uh, to put those numbers together. So I think that's, you know, kinda where we, and I think Chris.
I'm happy to, uh, I'm happy to work on that.
Great. And maybe Chris, um, wants to help us out again.
Yep.
You know, like that, you know, if you, if you compare the two waterfields, you know, situations, I, I think that was obviously, you know, a big disconnect was, you know, the spreadsheet, the numbers and that type of stuff. So we wanna, you know, try to control that this time around and certainly I think, you know, with this project, hopefully it's a little easier, just given the, the numbers. So if Marianne wants to do that, Mike and I can do the LDA. I think that takes care of it for now, but, um, so I would be looking for those types of votes and that type of support tonight if we were to move this forward. Does anyone have an issue with using ARPA money, uh, towards this project? Maybe something that we could show, you know, for, for the test of time that, you know, this is what we did with our ARPA money. So I think that's, you know, a good benefit. I do think, you know, here in the neighbors, and certainly we got, you know, a lot of feedback from some boards, uh, the Design Review Committee, um, the, all the Housing Partnership Board, Affordable Housing Trust, um, you know, all positive feedback. I think they do raise some good tweaks that we can consider in the negotiations and certainly go back to the Malanson group with. But, um, you know, and, and we've heard from the public, certainly, you know, the right commercial, uh, space is key, uh, and I think there's a commitment to trying to find that, that neighborhood tenant, uh, that, you know, is, you know, fits the neighborhood. And, um, you know, obviously parking, um, you know, that's just, anything we do in Winchester, you know, parking is a concern and it's a valid concern. Uh, and I think there's, we have a lot of tools in our toolbox to kinda address that as we move through this process, so we can certainly do that. But I think, you know, the first step would be us to approve, um, you know, awarding Malanson the, going forward with the Malanson group.
Move forward to negotiate an LDA with Malanson?
Yeah, I mean, I think the parking, you know, it's not something that is, can be done with the development, right? The parking and the street, that's something that is the responsibility of this board moving forward.
Great.
Seeing how it is and I feel, you know, I live on a cut-through street myself, right? And, and a street where a lot of people park when there's a baseball game, right? And, uh, the, the parking has, you know, it's, yes, it affects visibility. On the other hand, it actually reduces the speed of the people who cut through, right? So it cuts both ways, um, but it's something that we definitely need to address all over town.
There's also, on the permitting side, even though controlling what's off the development side, it's kind of au- outside of the four corners of the development, but it's not unusual to work. Again, you've got multiple levels of kind of the permitting, 'cause you've got project eligibility and then you got the, the zoning board process there. Negotiations around a set of conditions regarding what's in leases, what's not in leases and, and how that's controlled. It's not perfect because it relies on enforcement, but there can be some way to bridge gaps between or reduce tension around certain neighborhood parking issues by just, you know, again, good negotiations first in an LDA and then project eligibility and then ultimately in, in a forty B permit. And it's gonna take at least six months or probably gonna take up to six months to get that hearing done. So, a lot of time.
Just wanna say.
Just want to say, in many of the situations, we, parking is an easy way to describe it, but we're really talking about, like, pedestrian and street safety. And I think when we think of it that way, it's like a much more compelling need to address it than us addressing another, we're talking, we've been talking about parking for the past three, uh, two hours, two and a half hours. But really thinking, like, we're.
Seventeen years, it's up.
Right. But we're like, you know, it's really pedestrian, street safety, parking does work for slowing traffic in some cases. So, thinking of like, what we are doing to make those neighborhoods safer as more residents are coming into the neighborhood, or more parking, or, or more demand in the area.
Right, I agree. All right, so, anything else, anybody? With that being said, and Thea, do you want to make a motion?
I move that we award the RFP for Washington and Swanton Street to Melanson Development Group, subject to negotiations around the award.
Around?
Around the.
Subject to negotiating an acceptable LDA to this board. Is that sufficient?
And that we place an article for town meeting?
Yep.
Second.
Do I need a roll call vote for this? Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, great.
I know it makes us nervous when town council's here, because we gotta do things right.
Starting to sweat a little bit.
There's everyone's here, so.
Just give me the aye. Well, thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Jay, are you here, are you guys?
I think I'm sticking around for town meeting articles, to the extent there's any, is there any discussion around that?
Sure, I think it's fine.
Liz, good.
Yeah, I don't.
We've got Frank here, too.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the school committee first, and then we'll go back. I don't anticipate much, but stick around.
Do we have anything for?
I don't know where, I think, about meeting articles? Does any, I'll just ask, you know, when we get to the part of the, the meeting about town meeting articles, is there anything we think we need, anticipate legal counsel being here for? Be the, the list in that memo. I personally don't, but.
No.
Jay?
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna need you for dominating our stuff at this point.
All right, I mean, I have my marching orders on town meeting stuff anyway.
Yeah.
Bad, and Mark, and a few others, so.
Great, thanks, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to the Lynch override election date discussions. Why don't we invite Frank, Michelle, Jay? What else do we got here? Mary Ellen, yep, come on up. Grab another chair, Mary Ellen.
Sure.
Frank. Anyone else want to join us?
Hi, good, how are you?
Thank you all for joining us this evening. So, we're here to discuss setting a date for the override election. You know, there's been some internal discussions amongst people. You certainly saw a couple of M M O's and emails fly around, you know, whether it's November, December, January. Just trying to pick the right date for the project, to make sure that, you know, it succeeds and whatever's best for the project. So, with that, I will open it up to any of you who wants to go first, but tell us what date you're thinking.
Well, Jay Nardone, chair of the E F P B C. The date, the original date was January, working backwards from the M S B, uh, M S B A guidelines, with the amount of days you have to approve. We had a meeting back in June, tried to hash it out different ways, and we stayed with June, I mean, with January, January 8th on a Saturday. There was a lot of down, I mean, there was a lot of controversy with that being whether sports going on and such. But it really was the right day to go. Then, not too long ago, we were asked to look at another date in November. We did meet on it. I don't want to say, I mean, it, it felt like we were just getting the number, which we're following the guidelines, we're just getting the number, and now, all of a sudden, we're going to vote with Jim in this down everyone's throat. But it was, I did go back to the committee, it was doable, we could make it work. So, and that's the answer we got, was that we, if, if we need to do it in November, we can do it. And it might not be the best thing, or we really have to get out and get the information out to the public, but we could make, we could make the, it work if we had to. It's, it's not the best scenario.
And I, I think Dr. Hackett probably has more on that.
You said it well, Mr. Nardone, I think the, I think the concern is that, just the way this project lined up, partly because of COVID, partly because the town, the E F P B C did a nice job petitioning the M S B A for a larger design enrollment, which slowed it down a little bit. The M S B A only meets three times a year or so, so their, their board meetings, if, if you miss, if you miss a deadline, you are in, you're three months more behind. So, I think that, as we went through this process, it was just crunch time last winter. So, our education plan, which generally, school systems have a year, year and a half to finish, we had six weeks, just because of the way it lined up on us. So, it's been that way with this project, and then unfortunately, schematic design happened this summer. And so, we're coming out of the summer with really nobody around but a few of us, and a lot of work has been completed. So, what the public's gonna see, and have already started to see, and anyone who's tuning into E F P B C has been seeing, but I would imagine as a small audience, is they're gonna see a building that, that really has come a long way in design. You're gonna see images of the interior, you're gonna see kind of layouts of classrooms, you're gonna see exterior shots, site shots, and for people who have not been plugged into this, which would be, I would assume, the majority, including parents who have been gone this summer, I just think it's gonna be a lot of information really quickly, and people are gonna feel like, what happened? And was this, you know, was this advertised anywhere? Have we had any kind of meetings, have been public sessions? And while we've done a lot of that, I just, I am, as superintendent, just really concerned about our ability to get people on board, and to have them not just be on board, but also have an opportunity, I think of my staff primarily, to have the Lynch community, Lynch parents, Lynch teachers, Lynch staff, have the, have the chance to not just say, here it is, what do you think? But to actually be able to have some, have time for input and feedback. And they would anyway, but the way that it feels, it's just, when, when you have a vote pending, it just, people are gonna feel like, once the vote's done, then, you know, the pressure's off, it's, you know, you know the answer to the vote. You know, and, you know, I would just also add that I've never been anywhere where town meeting has voted on a project after the debt exclusion vote happened. So, just like, I, and I'm not, I'm, obviously, I don't live here, but in the normal course of business, the way that these projects line up, is that the M S B A approves, approves a project funding agreement, which is the grant money for the project that the town will receive. And then, once that's done, then it would go to town meeting for that conversation, and then it would go to a debt exclusion vote. I mean, that's how these projects generally line up. I do think it's just, it feels different, and maybe that's fine. But to me, you know, I also don't want to be in a situation where people feel like we're, you know, we're just cramming something down their throat, we're just trying to get something through, and really haven't really followed generally what the timeline and, and would look like.
And Dr. Hackett, you talked about the date of that vote from the M S B A, and that's October 26th.
Correct.
Which falls just before that November deadline as well.
Correct, as, as Jay said, I mean, it is, we know it's doable. It doesn't throw off the timeline of the project, we know, you know, we can do it, but I, I just don't know, this is obviously your decision, but I'm not sure it's the right date for the public.
So, your preference would be have M S B A vote October 26th, have town meeting vote in the fall, the November 10th, starting town meeting, and then have the election the first Saturday in January.
Or some date in January.
Which would be, I think it's January 7th or 8th, do you know?
It is, Saturday would be the 7th, or you could do it, you know, you could do it on a Tuesday as well. As town clerk, if I could just.
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
I just want to be clear that my job as the clerk is to just provide opportunities for information for the board to consider, for the folks at the E F P B C and the school department. So, I just wanted you all to know that it is a general election year in which we do have a November ballot. I actually did find out at the spring town meeting about the vote. So, as town clerk, it's difficult for me to come to the table when I'm hearing about the vote very late in the game, so then I'm running all of the opportunities of which is the best scenario. So, in the future, it would be great if I, my office could be part of those conversations earlier on with the E F P B C, so that I know what that calendar looks like. So, when you're looking at M S B A 18 months ago, I can be, maybe made privy to that, so then we can march along in the same place, because what ended up happening was I got information and then was like, oh, it's a general election year, let's put this on the governor's ballot. Do the number crunching for that, then find out that's a little tight, and then do some other creative thought process to save money for the community, which is part of my job, and then also to get voter turnout, right? November's a great turnout for governor's race, we're gonna have about 80, 85%. So, when I think about opportunity for the taxpayers, that's kind of what I'm thinking about. So, just to, to sort of explain that. But as your administrator, I will do whatever's best for the project. If it does mean a fourth election in this, in a calendar year, you know, we'll do it. I do need to ask the finance committee for some funding, because it is outside of the F Y 23 operating budget, so we can get into the details on that, but roughly a special election, somewhere under 40,000 to run it. And so, Saturdays tend to be a little bit more expensive, in the sense that you have overtime at a different rate than you might have on a weekday. But whatever the pleasure is for E F P B C to get the project done, the other piece that is important to know, and a lot of you are new to the elected official position, you do have an opportunity as a community to create the ballot question committee. So, if the school wants to promote, you know, the, the parents within the school want to promote a yes vote or a no vote for the school, there's timing on that, too. So, you want to make sure we give everybody enough time so that the parents in the neighborhood can form a committee and get lawn signs out and get the information out. So, you know, it is tough with November, because we have the summertime, you're doing the projects in June, and then everybody's leaving. So, I'm certainly open to doing whatever it is that you folks want. My only thought about the prod, about the vote was location. And I didn't know, Dr. Hackett, with the academic schedule, and we just had the, the primary on a school day. Huge feat, we did it, but it was very challenging.
It was challenging.
And thanks to everybody who helped with that. But if we could possibly do, just an idea, a townwide vote sometime in January, and do it at the Mara Auditorium for the eight precincts here at Town Hall, as opposed to asking the school district to move out of the gymnasium again for their winter sports, I, I don't know enough about the details with, with your athletic director, but I'd be amenable to that as well. We would just need to have a notification to the voters if we did a prop two and a half override change in location. But that is also available, okay?
That makes sense. Besides, Mary Ellen, just while I have you, with that thought in mind, you know, besides the high school and the elementary schools that we used before, I mean, you mentioned the auditorium, but are there any other identified places? I mean, my only concern about the auditorium is it's really not, I mean, there is an elevator, but it's, it's tough for handicap accessibility.
We can do the early vote by mail campaign under the change in the Massachusetts voting laws. So, when you call for the vote, you can give me a motion that says we will do a vote by mail. The sticky wicket with that is that it is a January vote, so we reset the applications. So, the applications that people have already submitted for November, they'll sunset December 31st. So, we could do vote by mail, which could help alleviate some of that, but with the parking and things like that, but that's a, that's a pretty big challenge as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of things to think about. I have never formally asked any of the organizations like St. Uleleas, St. Mary's Church, some of those places, Sons of Italy. We could do polling places in places that are not government-owned, but again, there's cost, and, and with a short notice, it's difficult with those places. They usually have, you know, CCD, or they have weddings, or what have you, so it makes it difficult. We're, we're in a tight spot, it's a small town, 6.2 square mile, and the population is growing by the minute, as you all just debated and talked about with parking, so.
Do you want Frank to have a snow day on a Tuesday in January?
Things happen.
Call a snow day, then it might not snow.
Do you have any P D days in January?
No. You know, this is a significant project, it's a 50-year building, and we will figure it out. I mean, I, I, that's the really, that's a very small detail of the scope of the, and the span of this building and this project. And I, like I said, I just want people to feel good about it, I want them to feel like they've been part of the conversation, I want them to, you know, feel like they own it, because they, they do. And it would, I think, we just need more time to, I know you have a, certainly an interest in making sure our voters are educated, too, and that's, I think that's the biggest concern. Do we have enough time to educate people on what this is and what it isn't, before they have to make a decision on, on whether or not we, we do it?
Sue.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have just one other thought. I've just encouraged, based on that thought, encourage the community. I mean, I do live here in town, my kids went to the Lynch, it is our neighborhood school, but you really do need to start talking about this now. I mean, this is.
It is in the works, yeah, yeah, and, yes.
Great.
So, in terms of the election, you know, we were never going to vote on the date tonight. I think we were just gonna have a discussion tonight. If we were to select a November date, Mary Ellen, I think we would need to vote by October 3rd, 4th?
October 4th.
October 4th, in order to get that on the ballot. But if, if the pleasure of, of all you tonight is to, a January date, you know, why don't you, well, I mean, unless anyone has an issue with that, I would say, go back and figure out what date specifically you wanted, on a Saturday, on a Tuesday, and then we can vote on it on a later date, is that?
Sure.
I would just say that we would prefer Saturday, if, if, in fact, we're talking about a school-based vote, that gives us more flexibility.
Okay.
Tuesday, school's in session, and then we're dealing with that.
So, do you have a date in mind? I mean.
Do you want to do the 7th, you want to stick with the 7th?
I think it's the 8th, but.
Is it the 8th? I'm sorry.
It is Saturday, it was the 7th.
Saturday, the 7th, that's what I thought. Okay. I mean, certainly, I can make it work. My concern is, it was poll workers, we'll figure it out, I might just ask you all to volunteer, come and work the polls. But I'm, I'm thinking about the ballot will be available three weeks prior. So, the deadline for you to vote on a January 7th would be December 3rd officially. We're gonna get the ballots in roughly the week of December 15th.
I mean, does it help your office, Mary Ellen, if we vote earlier, so that you can do the work earlier?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the sooner the better.
And to Ms. Lannan's point, I think it also helps the community, if you vote earlier, because then the yard signs and the community meetings, people know what they're headed towards.
Yeah, that 35-day notice is not.
Yeah, well, we might be able to vote on October 4th or in November, I don't feel comfortable with that, right? You're only given one month. I think if we're going to decide on November, we need to make that decision tonight. I think we need to make the decision tonight, whether it's November or January, that way everybody knows when it's going to be, whether we take the, you know, we don't have to take the formal vote, but of putting it on the ballot, or maybe we do.
Just, just to be clear, there's nobody at the high school, especially the administration, they would object to it not being at the high school.
Okay.
If it can happen somewhere else, I know that would be certainly a preference, but, you know, ideally, it would happen, if it's gonna happen at the high school, it'd be on a Saturday.
Okay, so then, now that I hear that from you, we're good to go. Let's do it Saturday, January 7th, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., all precincts.
Right, my phone is already ringing.
Okay.
And you got five volunteers sit, working the polls for you, so.
All right.
Between basketball games.
Right, yeah, just make sure we have our, our basketball practice.
A little pick and pull.
The whole team can go review today.
A friendly game.
Mike, you need to show up at 6:30 to set up.
That might be tough, that might be tough.
All right, so do we want to vote this tonight, or do we want to?
Let's, let's do it, yeah.
I think you should just do it.
Four, four votes.
Four votes.
Yeah, four, four votes, so we need to do a roll call vote.
So, we are voting for approving the election date, or?
I think the board is calling an election for the Lynch School override. I think the board is calling an election for the Lynch School override on January seventh. Location to be determined.
Yes. You don't need to have the wording right now. That's really what that thirty-five days prior is, the specific wording. And Mr. Tellman would confirm that. Yeah.
So I move that we call an election for the Lynch School override on Saturday, January seventh, 2023.
Second.
Roll just dead exclusion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move we call an election for the Lynch School dead exclusion for Saturday, January seventh, 2023.
Second.
Dead exclusion override for January seventh, 2023. Second by Mike. Roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Mariana?
Yes.
And Thea?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you all for coming in this evening.
Thank you. Good to have it done. Thank you very much.
All righty.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess my ideas on parking, do you want me to stick around?
Yep, yep. All right, we're going to go to Town Hall HVAC update. Sorry to keep you waiting. It's been a kind of a busy night. I think that's on, Ken. Might have shut off while we were waiting. I'm not sure.
Ken, how long was it waiting on Saturday?
It was pretty bad, but we, we made it. Hello, everyone. Ken Prue, the town's sustainability director, joins tonight by Scott Hendricks, professional engineer with Westin and Sampson.
Good evening.
To talk about the proposed heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrade for Town Hall. And we're going to go through a few slides. Also joining us right here is Meg White, special projects manager and instrumental in basically all capital projects that the town does. And we're going to start off actually with Scott, talking about the origin of the project and need for the projects, and then we'll transition to my part.
Excellent. Thanks, Ken. My name's Scott Hendricks. I'm with Westin and Sampson, a mechanical engineer. I run the mechanical department. About a year, a year and a half back, I was asked, Westin and Sampson was asked to provide a, an existing conditions assessment of the Town Hall from an HVAC point of view. What we found was, what you see up on the slide right there, poor temperature control, space humidity issues, which you're actually going through right now. The ventilation has no mechanical, I'm sorry, the basement has no mechanical ventilation at this time, and other spaces in the building are inadequately ventilated. Some of the equipment is in poor condition. The boilers are not very efficient. They're standard efficiency boilers. And we did find out that the main electric panel is made by a company that's no longer considered safe and you can't touch it anymore. So any work that needs to be done with regard to that is going to have to be, have a replacement of that panel. Next slide, please. With that, the recommendation, we originally looked at an all gas heated and replacing the existing air-cooled chiller both with a higher efficiency systems. And in the process of doing that, Ken was brought aboard and we were asked to redirect our, our thoughts to a more carbon neutral, all-electric type heating and ventilation system for this building. So what I want to do tonight really is quickly, just give you a quick overview of the, we looked at three scenarios and what they consist of. Just for sake of discussion, each of the scenarios will have two-pipe fan coil, similar to what you have now, with two-pipe meaning that there's hot and chill water going through there, obviously not at the same time. We are keeping the majority of the existing hot water piping that's in the building and making that into two-pipe system, which in most cases it is now as well, except for the auditorium. We're also providing dedicated outside air energy recovery ventilation for all spaces within the building, so the entire building will meet code for ventilation, including high efficiency MERV thirteen filtration to deal with potential future outbreaks of harmful things. And then in all cases, again, you'll be getting new DDC control systems for that, and this is again for the entire building. Okay? The first, the first system we looked at again is the condensing gas-fired boilers with new air-cooled chiller. We looked at a, an all-electric air-to-water heat pump system. In order to accomplish that, we are going to have to add fan coils to the auditorium, which they do not have right now. And because of that, you will be getting air conditioning in the auditorium if this particular scenario were to be selected. And then the, we're currently, if we go to an all-electric system, the existing generator is not going to be capable of backing up the heating system. There are some possibilities. We are looking at using the existing gas-fired boilers as an emergency backup should you lose electricity. In that case, we could use the generator to run the heating system, but it would not be all-electric at that point. And again, this is just an emergency scenario, right? If you lose electricity during the heating season. And then we also looked at the, you know, the cost was a little bit on the all-electric system. We looked at a hybrid, all-electrics, sorry, electric and gas, where we were going to shave some of the electric heat with gas fire. The rationale behind that is the heat pumps don't be, they're very inefficient at very low temperatures. And you, because of that, they also put out less heat at low temperatures when you need it the most, right? So we could actually cut back on the number of heat pumps required for the system if we were to use the existing boiler plant as it stands right now to peak shave at really cold temperatures. Right now, we're thinking that's somewhere in about like the ten to fifteen degrees outside air range. You can go to the next.
Did he look at ground-to-water heat pumps?
You don't have enough ground here to supply the whole building. There's not enough, there's just not enough physical space. So the economics on this, we did look at this in the beginning with a schematic design estimate with the condenser fire boilers and air-cooled chiller. That particular scenario, we were estimating to be approximately four point six million dollars in whole, and it saves about one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four thermes a year, or eighteen, about eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, which obviously is not that much money compared to four point six million dollars. There would be some minimal rebates available to that from the gas company, but they're not going to make much of a dent in a four point six million dollar price tag. We did look at the all-electric. The all-electric design has been progressed to about seventy-five percent construction documents. That number came in at five point nine five and change million. We're rounding it up to six for now. And what you're seeing now is with an all-electric version, we're estimating the annual gas usage of the building, based on our models, the, and other companies' energy models, as well as historic data, we'd be averting about fifteen thousand thermes of gas a year with a value of about fifteen thousand dollars. And we would be needing about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand KWH to replace that with an all-electric system. And the cost of that electricity is about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. If you go down to the hybrid situation that we asked, we're asked to look at, you'll see that the construction estimate goes down substantially. One of the key issues with this one is, is there is a substantial rebate from the utilities that would be available for that particular scenario right now. You can see that the averted gas usage has gone down slightly. We're only averting about fourteen thousand one hundred or so thermes of gas. So we're actually about a thousand thermes of gas a year we're going to, we were thinking we're going to need if we were to go with a hybrid scenario, and then about a hundred and fifty thousand KWH to avert that, and the negative cost is about twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty on the electric. And that's a quick rundown of the three scenarios that we've taken a look at.
And I'm about to show you a table that actually will break this out in a slightly more user-friendly way. But before hitting that, just a couple of points on why we care about this project potentially being fully electric. So the town adopted a climate action plan in 2020 that called for a variety of measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in town eighty percent by 2050. And there's a helpful framework to think about how the entire plan essentially is constructed, and it is that if you do those three things, maximize energy efficiency, electrify everything, and then supply that electricity with renewable electricity, renewable energy, you essentially eliminate carbon pollution by doing that. If the only energy source you're using is electricity and that's coming from renewable sources like wind and solar, nuclear as well, you actually eliminate your greenhouse gas emissions. And that's the, so that's the framework behind the climate action plan. It actually mirrors exactly what the state's plan is as well, coming out of the legislature and the executive office of energy and environmental affairs. It's, it's kind of being adopted nationwide. It's really where we're all headed. And so why does that, why are heat pumps valuable in that calculus? To produce a given amount of heat, as you can see here, a gas, a natural gas required to provide one million BTUs of heat is shown in red. It's less than half of that in terms of greenhouse gas emissions to provide the same amount of heat with a heat pump because they're extremely efficient. And that's given today's electrical grid, which is a little bit over half supplied by natural gas. That's just, that's dropping substantially almost every year so that by 2050, you'll essentially, will essentially be at a zero fossil fuel electrical grid, and therefore, everything running on electricity will be carbon-free. And that's, I just ran the numbers right before coming to this meeting. By doing the fully electric scenario, and we'll talk about that again in a moment, we reduce, immediately reduce greenhouse gas emissions associated with heating this building by over fifty percent. And that's what today's grid again, which is greening all the time. So there's a, I have a cost comparison table as well as sort of a pros and cons table. This captures in a little, maybe a little more user-friendly way, the, the numbers that we were talking about, that Scott was talking about a moment ago, and you can see them there. The capital cost is lowest for the gas replacement project, highest for the full electrification. Hybrid is in the middle. You may be wondering why there's a utility incentive for the hybrid system but not for the full electrification system. And we wondered the same thing, pushed, pushed pretty hard on the utilities to clarify that. They, their hands are essentially tied with a benefit-cost formula that they have in the Mass Save Program that requires that they look at a ratio, a benefit-cost ratio for their investment of the entire project, even if we only wanted them to give us a partial rebate for a partial project. They can't, they can't do it that way. They're not allowed to run the formula that way. So they essentially said, you know, hats off to you. It's great if you want to go full electrification, but we simply can't give you a rebate. And so.
It's also National Grid that we get the rebate from. So it's a little weird. They would give you a rebate for a fully electrical project, right? Because you'll no longer be their customer.
Of course. So that's why you see the two hundred and sixty thousand dollar utility incentive for the hybrid project and not the full electrification. In addition to that, even though you do, even though heat pumps are extremely efficient and you see a very large drop in carbon emissions from a fully electric building in Massachusetts and throughout England, electricity is very expensive. Gas is cheap at present, and that's why you see the higher, the higher fuel cost in the final, in the final column. I will say, without being able to point to specific numbers, both the state and the town, but more importantly, the state is looking to phase out fossil fuels over time. They're explicitly calling for that and planning for that. So any system run on natural gas over time will become more and more islanded and will have to cover more of the cost of maintaining the entire natural gas system. So there will come a point where if you heat with natural gas, your prices will go so high that you, it will essentially far exceed the cost of electric heating because you're paying a smaller and smaller pool of people to maintain the entire gas network. So this is the, the cost delta today, but over time, I think you actually avoid a great deal of cost risk associated with being on fossil fuels.
Question, does the Inflation Reduction Act have any incentives for, I know they have incentives for residential heat pumps. Are there any incentives for municipal heat pumps?
No, unfortunately, they don't. And I did look into that. They, they have finally, through the Inflation Reduction Act, municipalities can now get a direct payment for renewable energy generation. So for the first time, if a municipality puts in solar, in the past, we couldn't take advantage of the thirty percent federal investment tax credit. Now municipalities will be able to, and we were hoping that that would also apply, the ITC would apply to heat pumps, but it only is applying to residential at this point. I would have loved to include a thirty percent reduction in the cost as we, as we looked at this. And one last slide, but I'm happy to go back and forth, just let, essentially, there's pros and cons, as you can see on this page, for each, for each option. And I think what I might do is just stop for a moment and let you look through those options for a moment instead of just reading while, knees speaking while you're trying And what I will say is, so the, the staff recommendation mine, as well as the town manager, assistant town manager, and Meg White, is to actually go with the full electrification option here. It is, it is more expensive than the hybrid option and the gas option, but it achieves a key goal in the climate action plan. And doing so now means that we don't have to sort of come back and try to append an additional project in the future. If we, if we do the hybrid or gas option now, we won't be replacing the, the generator, for example, so we'd have to come back for a full electrification and do that part in addition to other, you know, restarting a project, not necessarily from scratch, but it's much easier. When you have these major equipment changeovers, when a heating and cooling system is at the end of its life, it's much easier just to, to go all, all one way instead of sort of one foot in two worlds. And so that's what, that's what we're recommending. Having said that, we wanted to present the pros and cons and the, and the costs for all the options, and ultimately, it'll be, you know, up to this board to give us some direction. So I think they're obviously looking for some direction as they finalize this project for, for capital and beyond. So, you know, this all sounds great to me. Not sure what others think.
Can you talk a little bit about as communities migrate towards electric heat, HVAC, what's the grid's ability to support that? Because you could have the supply disruptions and then you're sort of in a pickle that you sort of didn't want to be in.
Yeah, it's a great question. I hear, I hear it a lot, and it's a, it's an important question. So I think there's a short-term answer and a longer-term answer. In the short term, National Grid said to us that we're actually the first municipality to come to them with an air-to-water heat pump. It's much more difficult to retrofit an existing old or especially historic building to be all-electric than with new construction. You know, the Lynch School that you were talking about a moment ago is going to be all-electric, and it's very easy to do so and very economical. It's much harder with older buildings. So the rate at which existing buildings are going to be retrofitted to be all-electric is actually going to be fairly slow in the beginning, and we hope it'll ramp up substantially in the future. So, you know, initially, there's, it's not going to be an issue. The grid can handle, can handle it, can handle, and a lot more than that. The, the state is aware, the, the grid operator for New England is aware, everyone's aware that to truly electrify and take advantage of this electrify everything and supply it with renewables model, that we first of all have to just start generating a lot more renewable electricity. And a huge amount is actually coming mostly offshore winds. We're about, we're just kicking off as a state and as a region, a monumental scale offshore wind, a series of farms. So there's a lot coming. We might be about to get a lot of hydro power from Quebec depending on how the courts rule and project and name. And then, but then the other question is, you know, the, the transmission lines and the distribution lines are inadequate right now to fully electrify. But, you know, the utilities and the Department of Public Utilities and the state's and EEA are all aware that we have to undergo a massive transition. This, this conversation's happening nationwide, in fact. So, you know, we.
We have two, two transmission line projects cutting through our town right now.
So it's, you know, if, if we don't, if, if we don't, you know, grid mod, if we don't modernize the grid, you know, not just the Town Hall, but essentially, you know, the entire basis that we're headed towards for an electrified economy is going to be thrown in doubt. So I, I think it's theoretically possible, but I, I think there's just too, the momentum is too great. We're going to have to find a way to do that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Ask, what's the, I mean, what's the age of the current system and then what would be sort of the lifespan of a new?
Great question. What do I?
Sure. A substantial amount of your system was put in in '08. The age of a new, I'm sorry, the lifespan of a new system, the new heat pumps would have a lifespan of about twenty years. have a lifespan of about twenty years. New boilers would be probably about twenty-five years. They have a tendency to last a little bit longer. You know, the controls, we'll give you the most modern controls we possibly can, but those kind of have a tendency to change about every ten years. Fan coils, the ones you have right now, they're probably, some of them are probably older than 2008, I'd be willing to bet looking at them.
Yeah. So the work that was done in 2008 was just the boiler installation?
Okay.
I mean, I've worked here for seventeen years, there, there's never, it's looked like this.
It's nineteen eighties right there.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, it's getting to the point where, you know, equipment like that, after about twenty or thirty years, it gets difficult to get parts. So...
So one, one clarification there though, not to put words in your mouth, but there are aspects of this project, pieces of equipment that might have to be replaced at a certain point.
Right.
For instance, the larger piping, the larger fan coil systems hopefully can last longer than twenty years. I understand that heat pumps specifically might, or boiler might not last as long, but a big chunk of this cost, my understanding, is based on the fact that we're enlarging the fan coils and putting in, and putting in ventilation for the first time.
Right.
And although all those ducts are going to be hidden, be there permanently.
Yeah, so the, we are, we are using most of your piping system and that's one of the things that actually, believe it or not, kept the costs down and helped us to do this project without destroying your architecture, quite honestly. So, you know, from that point of view, I've seen hydronic systems that pretty much almost last forever as long as you don't, you know, as long as you keep your chemistry up and, you know, you don't, someone doesn't drill a hole in them with, you know, in the pipe or something like that, or, you know, they pretty much last indefinitely. We are going to be replacing the pipes between the outdoor chillers, which is where the new heat pumps would go. That underground pipe then will be replaced as part of either of the projects at this point in time.
Other comments?
Yeah, I mean, the comment I was going to make is, you know, long term, the, well, even short term, the, the wind farms going in are going at a very, very low cent per kilowatt hour really. So I expect that the, the, over time, the price of electric will go down while the price of gas will go up. So, and, you know, you see so many times when you do anything around your house, if you, if you pay a little bit more at the beginning, it's cheaper than doing it, again, too soon or, or having to, to change it. But to me, the most important thing is that how we spend our money is how we express our values and the, it's, it's time, it's time to do full electrification. Carbon is the challenge of our generation and we need to do this. So full electrification is the way that I would vote.
Well said. Anything else?
I just wanted to mention, from a project standpoint, not whether we go gas, hybrid or electric, the, the dire need of this new HVAC system in this building, it's something that staff has struggled with for the seventeen years that I've been here. It's, the basement in particular is a very uncomfortable space to work in for several months of the year and this is a sorely needed improvement to this wonderful historic structure.
So will that resolve some of those issues that we've had with moisture and everything down there?
If it doesn't, I'm in trouble.
So, yeah, and, and certainly it seems like the full electrification is the, the way to go here, but I, I appreciate the analysis here because it, it helps us make the, the decision and moving in the right direction. My question is a little bit kind of along lines what Anthea was, was asking. You know, we've, we've put in some systems like, you know, we put some water heaters at Morocco. They were kind of new to the market. They were high efficiency and, you know, we were kind of ahead of the game and they, they failed a lot faster than we anticipated and we had to replace them. The company was from Canada and we couldn't get parts. We couldn't do anything. And so, you know, these heat pumps and what we would be installing, they're pretty tried and true and things that we've, you know...
We talked about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's a new technology for New England. It's not a new technology for other parts of the country, nor is it a new technology for Europe. The ones we're looking at right now are actually made in Italy. They've got the best track record of what we could find available in the United States right now. I do know since we started this project, both York and Train have come out with a similar air source heat pump. I know other vendors are also in the midst of doing the same thing. The technology itself is basically the same as your air cooled chiller that you have outside, which has been around for, as long as I've been in the business, for over thirty years. And they're just running it backwards like a heat pump, right? So it's just like taking your, your split system air conditioner, running it backwards as a heat pump. We're going to take that air cool, not that air cooled chiller, but an air cooled chiller designed to run in that mode and run it as if it were a heater and, and cool the air and heat the, and heat the building with it. So the technology is, is not new. Its implementation in New England is very new. And I'm expecting, you know, last we talked, I believe we were talking probably about a spring bidding time, I think, for this. I expect even more offerings as far as who's, who's selling this equipment, even between now and then, to be honest with you. It's, it's that up and coming.
And Scott, how long does the project take for installation once, if, you know, if it's approved?
Sure.
And when can we get it online?
We haven't really got into the ideas of, of how we're going to deal with moving people around and that kind of a thing. I can tell you that the, the actual fan coils themselves are not going to be that intrusive, but the air handlers and all the ductwork will be. And we'll be taking down ceilings, lights, you know, fire alarm systems, that kind of a thing. It really depends on, on how flexible you folks can be in, in moving space around and being, you know, thinking through that process and what's, what's available and what's not available. I mean, if, if this building were empty, you're probably looking at about a, an actual six month construction period, four to six months. I mean, they do a whole school in the summer on a regular basis, right? And this is smaller than a lot of schools. So, you know, an empty building, four to six months. An occupied building has a, you know, it depends on how, how we, how we look at it, what we do and when we do it. You know, do we want to pay for night work, that kind of a thing? I can tell you the, the budget we have right now does not have much overtime built into it. There is some time to deal with moving people around, that kind of a thing. But I don't have any, we don't have any like overtime figured into the, the cost analysis right now.
Well, it's set the town down for four to six months?
Good. Next summer? Are they really good with that?
Take the summer off. There you go.
Luckily, folks are now used to working from home and, and, and out of that sort of this.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we were push, you know, kind of mulling around was maybe putting some queues out in the auditorium. You know, do that part first, put some queues out there and people could work out of that space for a month or two and then go back to their offices.
I hear they love it in there.
When it's air conditioned, they will, right?
We have experience with that.
We've been there.
All right. Anything else? All right. So do we need to take a vote on this or consensus? What do you?
I don't know. Maybe helpful, just so that we have a clear direction on how to move forward.
Sure. I agree.
So I think we're all on board on the all electric system? Makes sense? All right. So if we'll take a motion for that?
Sort of making motion for our town manager to bring this forward or where is it, where's it going next?
So I think the, for the board to endorse the concept of moving forward an all electric HVAC system at Town Hall and to further the, the design to make that happen, basically.
I move that the board endorses moving forward with the full electrification option for the Town Hall HVAC update and moving for, moving forward any further design.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Great. Thank you both for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Sorry for the long wait.
Yeah.
All right. Rolling right along. Beth, we're going to go back to the beginning and let's actually accept the donations first, Anthea.
I move that we accept with gratitude two ARPA stabilization grants to the Recreation Department. The March dispers, uh, March dispersment, one in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents to be used for the RAP kid connection and the other in the amount of five thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents to be used for the Lynch after school program.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next?
Move we accept with gratitude a donation of four thousand dollars from the Winchester Mount Vernon House to the Council on Aging for maintaining the Jenks van, including gas maintenance and repairs.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move we accept with gratitude donations of a hundred and fifty dollars to the Council on Aging for appreciation of services provided.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Beth, town manager's report.
Sure.
You might have covered a lot.
Yeah, I think there's just a few. Just a reminder that we are still at level three critical drought, although we've gotten some rain, especially over the Labor Day weekend, it would still have a significant deficit. So we do still have the voluntary water ban in effect, which is Saturday, Tuesday, Thursday before nine AM and after seven PM. Also, if you're packet, was a copy of what we're calling a cost of water analysis that we had the Abrahams group do that basically looked at if the town was to get rid of our reservoir systems and our water treatment plant, what it would cost to supply the town a hundred percent with M N B R A water. It was kind of brought up as part of the overall discussion about rehabbing the town's reservoirs that we funded. And it is a significant cost over time. It's about, an additional cost of about one point one million in FY23 with a projected cost of over six point five million over a five year period. So we are, we are lucky that the town's, you know, founding fathers had the forethought to, to, you know, develop those reservoirs and that we've been able to operate our treatment plan and, and provide our community with excellent quality water at a, you know, at a good price. So I think that, that kind of, if the board has any questions on, on that, I think that kind of puts the analysis to bed for that. Just mention the all alcohol packaged store license. We did advertise it over the summer. We didn't receive any applications, so it's still out there. We'll let the board know if anybody expresses interest going forward. Upcoming construction projects will be bidding the DPW fire alarm and also the Morocco School electrical repairs, which were part of the, the Morocco work was part of the override that was done, I guess it was spring of twenty-one. There are some supply chain issues that we're hoping to do that work over this summer. Some supply chain issues, so we're bidding it now, hopefully for next summer work. Ever Source work is continuing, so Ever Source is on the three forty-five project out on Cross Street and Washington Street. We're hoping to have the work on Washington Street done by the start of the school year, but things never go as quickly as we hope. So we hope they'll be done by the end of September, at least. The majority of the work on Washington Street, they'll still be at the Abberdon River Crossing. Probably noticed that the crews have remobilized the area near the Wedgemere train station for the Ever Source one fifteen project, so they have to jack a pipe under the river there and it actually goes out into the street. So they are mobilizing to do that work and then they have to construct the pipe that will get installed in one long segment down Bacon Street. So there will be a little bit of impact to people who live on that street for driveways and Ever Source is working with those abutters who, they won't be able to kind of cross the center line for a short period of time while they assemble that pipe out there. Projects that are ongoing right now, the North Reservoir Dam and Transportation Project, both hopefully will be substantially complete by the end of this year. Morocco School roof repairs at work will be starting later this month and there's a lot of coordination ongoing to make sure we can do that safely with an occupied school building space. Happy to report that the Church Street at Waterfield Road project is complete. I think it looks great. We got the plantings in, the stripings down. It's a, it's a huge improvement visually, but also from a safety perspective, it's just so much safer to cross there, so.
I think the project overall went really well. I heard a lot from people that live and work in that neighborhood that I think it was minimal impact to the businesses there, which said there was a lot of concern.
Yeah, we had an excellent contractor who was really willing to work with us and work with the businesses, so I think it went really well. Yeah. I mentioned before that the Arbor, Arbor Wendell temporary pump station is up and running, so that was a, a great effort between town staff and our consultant from Westin Sampson to get that work done so quickly. Unfortunately, with the Woodside and Wildwood Road project, we have to push that off to next spring. We were, we did get the funding from the state at the beginning of August, but there is no curbing left in the state for us to be able to procure to, to get that work done. So we'll be pushing that off until the spring.
I saw some of the projects in Woburn.
Yeah, maybe we need to just go by.
Your excavator, John, can we just get some curbing?
Please don't take the curbing from Washington.
I did see it, I did see it up on the, the tree belt as I went by yesterday. And the last one I want to mention is next Monday, we have the Main Street Bridge railing repair project starting. So the bridge that goes over the Abberdon River at the Center Falls Dam. Thank you, Patty. That work will be starting next week. They'll, they'll be, overall, they think it's going to last two months, so about one month on each side. There'll be sidewalk impacts and then the parking will be closed on one side while they do the work and then they'll flip the work zones to the other side and do that. So it's hard to go a few months without construction in the town center, so here we are.
The gift keeps on giving.
And then just two community things. As everybody knows, we have the Spirit Night starting, or Spirit Weekend, starting Feb, excuse me, Friday, September twenty-third and the same weekend, we have the Glendorton Race on that Sunday. I think we have fireworks.
Fireworks Saturday night at eight-thirty.
Saturday night, so be great.
Chesterfield?
Great event.
Please.
And then Ken, our Sustainability Director, has been organizing Climate Solutions Week starting the week, starting September twenty-fourth. So there's going to be a series of events each day, both in person and remote for people to attend. And Patty, do you want me to? Yeah, okay. And I have an appointment, half the presses, in accordance with section four dash two B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the Rules and Regulations of the Department of Personal Administration Civil Service, as permitted by chapter seven oh eight of the Acts of nineteen forty-one as amended, I have made the following conditional full-time and part-time appointments in the Police Department for Matthew Carr, Kyle Franco and Heather Van German for patrol officers and sub...
Did you say Heather? This is Hunter.
Excuse me, Hunter, not Heather. Do you know how to pronounce the dispatcher's name?
Supir.
Supir. Pabla. For the part-time dispatcher. And I request the board waive the fifteen day appointment period.
So if we could have a motion to do that?
I move we waive the fifteen day waiting period for part-time dispatchers Supir Pabla and patrol officers Matthew Carr, Kyle Franco and Hunter Van German.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope, great. Any questions for Beth on any of that?
Nope.
All right, thank you, Beth. All right, moving on, we're going to go to discuss Fall Town Meeting articles in ARPA funding. So it's, there's a list in Beth's memo to us about the Fall Town Meeting articles. You know, we've seen a consensus that this is what we're going to work on and then the warrant closes on the twenty-sixth, so we would, I think, draft.
We'll have draft language.
Draft language for the twenty-sixth for us to consider on these articles. We talked about, we did want Washington Swan Street LDA already. You know, I didn't know if we want to put on an alternative that we could always pull in terms of just amending, rescinding the prior town meeting vote, requiring it to be all rentals, because, you know, we only got one RFP as all rentals, so, you know, we can have that alternative on there. I know so we're not wasting any time, you know, in between. I think that makes sense. I'm not sure what others think.
What's the benefit of the alternative? What's the benefit of the alternative?
So we don't have to wait till Spring Town Meeting to put it on, so we're not losing that dead time while we're holding this piece of property.
I think if the, if you move forward the Lansing proposal and it doesn't pass at town meeting, then this would be an alternative to consider.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
To give you a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah, we can put it there and just say we will, we will indefinitely postpone it if the LDA passes.
Correct. Yep. Everyone okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern is, I mean, obviously I don't like the, the article being there, you know, wish it wasn't, but, you know, if we're giving people an out on the, you know, on it, but it's fine. I mean, I think it needs to be there at this point.
Okay. Funding the healthcare stabilization funds. You heard Stacy mention the two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that we have. I mean, it's something, you know, we can consider. Borrowing authorization for the final pump station servicing Arbor Lane and Wendell Street. Arthur Griffin Museum Lease Agreement Revision, that's the money that we're holding, the bond that we're holding. They're looking for some of that back to do capital improvements. The appropriation of opioid settlement funds. So Beth, I assume we're getting opioid settlement funds?
Just have the account.
Okay.
We just have the account, so we should hopefully be-
Are we pooling our resources? We haven't even talked about this.
We haven't talked about it, no.
Okay, we could talk about that. But we need to appropriate the money for that. Recent debt authorized and non-issued-
Standard article.
Standard issue article. Lynch School Construction Traffic Improvements. This will be sponsored by the FPBC, so we need to work on that. And Tool is working on a number, a ballpark number that we should have maybe for next meeting, maybe?
I have it.
Oh.
We can talk about it, yeah.
You want to open that?
Sure. So, we have Tool, we funded Tool at Fall Town Meeting, or Spring Town Meeting, I can't remember, to do kind of a concept level study, looking at improvements on the, kind of, both sides of the Lynch School, on Pond Street Quarter, in the Middle Sex Street, Canal Streets, about Sevester Ave neighborhood. So, they've come up, I just got it on Friday, so we haven't, we haven't looked at it. We're having a meeting with them on Thursday to look in more detail. There's a lot of raised crosswalks. So, there's a lot of very good proposals for improvements that we can do to improve pedestrian safety in both of those neighborhoods, and I think slow traffic down. It's a big number. It's two point one million is the estimated construction cost for everything. We add in police details, design fees, you're probably closer to three million for everything. So, I think we need to have a conversation about what our priorities are to include in the override vote. We don't have to do all these projects at once. It's something that we could phase long-term, maybe-
Think she drew the town hall? This should be priority number one?
I think so, yeah. So, the idea is that this would be, whatever number we come to would be included in the Lynch override, override vote as one package, right? One article. Not the traffic improvements for the Lynch neighborhood would be part of it. So, my recommendation is that we bring Tool into a future meeting to kind of talk about the scope of what they propose, and then we can get a better idea of-
So, how much do you say? Two?
So, their construction estimate with a thirty percent contingency was two point one. It didn't, doesn't include police details, so there's a lot of, you know, add some to that, plus construction admin, plus we need to get design money. We just had the money for the concept level. So, all together, it's a big number for everything that they've proposed.
Three million.
Yeah, three million on a-
Hundred million dollar project.
Well, after MSBA reimbursement, yeah, sixty million, right? For McCallface two, we did half a million on a ten million project, right? So, it's about the same percentage.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have them come in. I mean, one of our meetings coming up. We can talk about which day works best for them, and they'll have all the information. So, we'll put something like that on for that, and we have our standard articles. Any questions about any of that?
Can we revisit the Washington and Swanton Street? I say, Charlie, I have the same concern, that Mike has.
Sure.
Is that the out that we want to give town meeting, or is there something else that we want to propose if the LDA doesn't pass?
I mean, the only, you know, kind of carrot and stick with the project here is that, you know, it's not like Waterfield where somebody can just obstruct if they don't want the project at all. You know, the clock is ticking because we're gonna have to pay debt service on this in, you know, starting in March, right? So, I mean, there's a real consequence for us just kicking the project down the road, so, you know.
Yeah, I don't know that removing the SHI, then we have to put it back out to-
I know, I know.
I mean, it doesn't, you know, it puts us at a significant financial, even if we have this, right? It's not really an out.
Well, we got one bid with the current RFP and the current, you know, requirements, so I think this gives us more flexibility on it. I still want, I mean, my thinking is we just don't want dead time. I mean, we're gonna have to wait, you know, from November to May in order to do anything on it. And that's a long time, because these projects don't move fast.
Yeah, I mean, I only say that out of frustration. I mean, it seems like it's, it makes sense, you know, to do that, but it's just, you know, we've got to have this conversation at town meeting as part of the discussion of the project, the impact of this, because the question is going to be, why did we pay, you know, five point three for it, and we're getting four for it, and have to use, you know, ARPA funds, right? Even though it doesn't impact our budget, there's still resources. And the kind of elephant room is this amendment that was, you know, added on at town meeting, so. If, that's, it's gotta be part of the conversation, but I don't want people to think that, also that there's this, you know, pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. If we get rid of it, it just, you know, it's, it's given us an option.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that somebody bidding for condos is going to offer more money anyway. I mean, like, there's no reason to believe that if we paid market price, which we did, somebody is going to bid anywhere close to market price when we're saying twenty-five percent of it has to be affordable. Because even removing the SHI, to be able to build affordable housing there, twenty-five percent has to be affordable so that we can use forty B, because we're not changing the zoning of it, right? So, there's no way that somebody's going to pay more than seventy-five percent of the market value if you remove the, if we remove the hundred percent SHI for condos, right?
Well, I mean, they could, they could do, they could do market, they could do for sale, you know, you know, market rate.
They can play around, but it's not gonna be, we're not gonna get the full amount back.
I think, yeah, to your point, I mean, I think that, you know, play around is the point. Like, we never meant this project to be, you know, on our books for long. It was always just passing through us. So, where there is maybe, you know, another, you know, option in our mind, this is really the best burden hand for the community and gets units built, you know, which is our goal, right? That's our number one policy objective. So, I'm fine with it. I just, it's more-
We can take it off if everyone wants. It's up to you. I mean, the worst-case scenario is we have, if we had to take further town meeting action, we would have to wait until, you know, Spring Town Meeting.
Or we call a special town meeting, once we decide what town meeting really wants, right? If the LDA fails, we figure out what town meeting wants, and we call a special town meeting in December to do it.
I had the same reservations, Mike. You know, I said, you know, are we telegraphing that we think that there's, there may be some reasons why this shouldn't fly? And so, am I willing to sit on it for six months? I probably am.
Okay.
Because I think it's, I think it's a good proposal by Melanson. You know, and we've all agreed that for a million three, or whatever the deficit's gonna be, it's a good, it's a good investment.
And we built in our legal exposure with that price as well, you know? So, you know, we were on the high end, because when we did our, you know, appraisals, you know, we had litigation coming at us from the, you know, previous owners, right? And that's always the option there, so there may be a market rate that's, you know, a little soft now, but we've kind of built in payment of our risk, because we compensated them at the higher, higher level on the taking, so.
All right, so it sounds like a majority of people want to take that off. It's fine.
Anthea, is that cool with you?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
All right, sounds good. So, that's our list. Be good? So, staff will prepare warrant articles for our next meeting on those.
That's not three nights of meetings.
What?
No, I saw the schedule and-
That's town meeting.
I know, but I'm saying that's not three nights.
No, that's just the select board ones, John.
Yeah, but.
I bet it'll be four. Is it on camera?
It's legal in Mass now. You can do it.
Is it? All right. ARPA funding, let's go, so we have one item, I think, about ARPA, and it was in Beth's memo. The sports court came in a thousand dollars under two hundred thousand, but that doesn't include the alternate one, which is the walkway that we talked a lot about from the parking lot up to the, up to the sports court. So, there's really no money for contingencies or that walkway. So, they'd like to add that alternate in, because that was, you know, important to the neighbors. So, they're looking for an additional thirty thousand dollars in funding to put the, to do the project with the current bid. You know, that walkway would also serve for, you know, future projects, you know, future upgrades. If they would upgrade the playground to the right, or, you know, the grassy area as well. So, it's kind of like a centralized walkway from that area. The other, sorry to steal your thunder, but the other alternatives, you know, I think they're looking for other funding sources at this point, like the fence and items like that. So, in order to make this project happen as, you know, designed and, you know, as the neighborhood, you know, wants to see, we would need to approve thirty thousand dollars in additional ARPA funding, thirty thousand dollars in ARPA funding to make this happen. Anyone's thoughts on that?
We think the sports court is a good idea, right?
I mean, I do personally, yeah.
Okay, no, and I think that-
I don't want to talk for everybody, but yeah, I do.
No, we, this, you in particular, but the select board did a good job, sort of pretty Humpty Dumpty back together again with the neighbors. This is important to them. We represent it to them. I think we should be people of our word and fund it.
Yeah, I agree. Does anyone feel differently? Hearing nobody. Is everyone okay with it? So, if we can have a motion to do that?
Yep, I move we approve the ARPA funding request of thirty thousand dollars for alternate one on the Mystic School Sports Court.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed?
Excuse me, can you actually do an inch that right, because Stacy asked for it?
Yes, sorry, it's ARPA.
Oh, sure.
Each item, the item?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's one project.
It's one. It's-
Okay, yeah, all right.
I think it's only when we have multiple projects that you're voting at once. I know, she'll set up separate accounts for each of these, but I think it's, well, we'll tell you on the twenty-sixth. I think we're okay.
Nothing else in ARPA, right?
Um, no, not tonight, no.
You see the, you see the running tally of where we're at. You can add in, you know, the one point three million, so. You know, I think that's, you know, figuring out Washington Swanton Street will allow us to go through the next phase of this, which is talking about, you know, community, the community agencies that submitted requests and other entities. So, I think we could start, you know, we can start talking about that.
Yeah, the other one that, there are a couple on our kind of municipal list that we hadn't kind of gone to.
Yep.
The Lynch, or, excuse me, Leonard Playground, we have Hunter's Design kind of looking at the master plan right now, so we'll need to figure out what we want to fund out of that going forward from ARPA. And then the ADA funds was one of the things we had talked about, although it had a lot to do with we ended up doing here with the Town Hall HVAC, because their kind of project areas are overlapping. And there was some, another one that I'm-
Downtown Action.
Downtown Action.
See if our earmark came in on design cost for that, so.
So, there's a few other kind of municipal projects.
We should know that this week, the twentieth, so. By our next meeting, we may have an answer on that. All right, the last item on our business agenda is the, I think, we bounced around a lot tonight. The Manchester Field lighting policy. You saw the memo that I just put together. So, you know, since we made, you know, vote of the changes in the light policy, you know, staff has been meeting. I met with staff, and we've kind of just been going through the list that, you know, the emails and the public comments received by the neighbors of concerns out in that area, and kind of what we're doing to address them, and that memo kind of, you know, outlines what we're, you know, where we're headed, what we're looking into. I think the next step, certainly happy to discuss any of that tonight in there, but I think the next step would be to engage the neighbors in a discussion surrounding these topics and the topics that we think we need neighborhood input into, such as, you know, parking restrictions on Manchester Road, the gate accessibility, you know, whether those are locked or if they want to keep them open for a cut-through. There's a lot of, you know, I think there's good sense among staff that a lot of the issues that, you know, complained about, you know, don't involve really rentals, but more, you know, people cutting through the area, or kids after school, or informal activities on the, on the field. You know, one thing that we talked about is in the process, I've actually seen, you know, some draft signs, putting signage up just about, you know, the rules of the field and, you know, how it's a neighborhood. If you want to rent the field, where to go, that type of stuff, changing the rental agreement. So, I think, you know, staff's working hard to address, you know, make sure these concerns are taken care of. You know, talking with the police chief, they've done direct patrols in that area since July fourth, and you saw, you know, Manchester, Manchester Road, they've done seventy direct patrols, and they've written twenty-three tickets in that time period. That was over summer, so obviously we're gonna continue that in the fall, because the field's in much more use during the fall than the summer, and see what the data is there as well. And that should help drive, you know, discussions about, you know, any changes that, you know, the neighborhood or us want to consider for that road, so. But happy to address any of those topics in that, in that memo, but I think the next step would be, you know, sometime in October to have a neighborhood meeting, like we kind of did with the sports court, and just go over some of these, you know, what we're doing and, you know, what needs to be done and different, run some different ideas by them as well. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, it was a good memo. It showed a lot of progress and thought went into it, and just think about closing the gates, though, you know. If I lived one block over from Manchester Field, I'd like to cut through there if I'm a little kid. I don't want to have to walk around going on a busy street.
Yep.
And so, and I think you have to balance that with-
No, absolutely. I think that's the discussion we have to have with the broader community. No, absolutely. Maybe, you know, there's a bunch of gates over there. Maybe it's a certain gate, you know, that's locked, you know, where you can cut through another one, but, you know, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, it's a concern to cut, to close off safe pedestrian route.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm not sure that, I mean, there are public streets, right? And if kids are using the public streets to walk to and from the field, that's okay, right? So, you know.
Yeah, a lot of people, you know, access the fields from different, you know, locations, and, you know, I see that down there all the time, people walking dogs, people that are just going to walk on the track, and I think it would deter people. I mean, the other thing that we talked about was, and I haven't been down to the basketball court, but, you know, one of the, because of the project there, part of the gate was open. I don't know if we closed that yet or what the plan was there in, you know, but leave-
About the hole in the fence?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be closed up by DPW. That was for the project.
Yeah.
For the construction.
And I think that what I saw from playing basketball, people down there, is that everybody started parking on Mystic Valley Parkway because they had that entrance that was close to Mystic Valley Parkway. So, it was a huge benefit, because it relieved everybody parking near the other gate in the neighborhood, right? So, to close it up, I think, is not helpful. So, and again, it creates like a kind of corner there, which is kind of like where you want to access that new part, where there's the benches and everything, so it just seems weird to close it up.
They did just open the gate that's off of Mystic Valley Parkway near the long jump pit, I think it is. So, that gate has been locked for years, and so that is now open, which I think does provide another point of access for people who want to park on Mystic Valley Parkway.
Yeah.
All right, so more to come on that. And it's, you know, it's an evolving situation as, as we, as we work, you know, collaboratively with everyone. All right, so I think the only thing left then is our consent agenda, and you can see we have, you know, a lot of events going on in the town in the next couple of weeks, which is great to see. You know, it's great to see people back out and celebrating, so. Including Spirit Weekend, it looks like there's a beer garden for approval on here at the Griffin Museum, from three to six on the twenty-fourth before the fireworks. Any questions about the consent agenda?
None.
I move we accept the consent agenda as printed for the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. I think we got through everything, right? Thanks, everyone, for the long meeting. Can I just get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, WinCam. Good night.